Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Monday, June the 13th, 2022 Business Meeting. I will call the meeting to order and ask that all please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we will say welcome to our viewing audience that is joining us live stream. And with that, Board members, we need to adopt the agenda, setting the agenda at item number 3.01, and I would ask that we move 11.01 and make it 8.02, which is our public comment, to get those people ahead of our action agenda and a little earlier. And then also, we need to pull the SRO's contract for tonight, and we will place it on the June 27th Budget Meeting. May I have a motion with those corrections?
So move.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We also need to take a moment for a moment of silence. We had a custodian from Odell School this past weekend that was in an accident and passed away, so please join us in a moment of silence. Our thoughts and prayers go out to that family. Board members, we will begin with recognitions, items under 4.01. We will start with our Great Wolf Lodge Everyday Hero Award, and we will have Mr. John Legrand to the podium, please. Good evening.
Good evening. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Kapicki, I would like to call Ms. Tara Walter and family for it to be recognized. Ms. Walter, if you could come on down, and with her also is Stephanie Allman, the Cabarrus County Schools School Nutrition Department Director. This evening, I am very proud to present this month's Great Wolf Lodge Everyday Hero Award. This award is presented monthly to an employee within our Auxiliary Services Department, which includes our kids plus facilities maintenance, constructions, student nutrition, and transportation departments. This award is intended to recognize the outstanding behind-the-scenes work of our employees in our auxiliary services that often goes unnoticed. As we know, there's great work going on daily by these employees that should be recognized publicly. In addition to the public recognition here at the board meeting, we are very grateful for our partners at Great Wolf Lodge that have generously provided complimentary water park passes for four to each month's recipient of our Everyday Hero Award. With us tonight is this month's recipient of the Everyday Hero Award, Ms. Tara Walter. Ms. Walter works in our School Nutrition Department as a cafeteria manager and was nominated by Coltrane Webb Elementary Principal, Mrs. Megan Smith. Ms. Smith had this to say about Mrs. Walter. Mrs. Walter is an essential member of the Coltrane Webb STEM Elementary School community. She has been at Coltrane Webb as a cafeteria manager for nearly 22 years, and our school's culture would not be the positive, welcoming, inclusive learning environment it is without her presence. Mrs. Walter not only leads her team and manages her cafeteria with professionalism, efficiency, fairness, and most importantly, love, but she knows and is invested in all members, teachers, staff, and students of our entire school community. The success of our cafeteria is consistently rewarded by school and district, however, Ms. Walter will never accredit herself with these celebrations. She always points to her staff, district leaders, teachers, students, and families. As an experienced manager, you will see her working within all elements of any position within the cafeteria from cooking, serving, inventorying, scheduling, running the register, and greeting and speaking with students and staff who she knows all by name. Ms. Walter is a well-deserving member of the Great Wolf Lodge Everyday Hero Award in that she works tirelessly, behind the scenes, every day to ensure that Coltrane Webb Elementary School is the best it can be for those that we serve. I would like to thank Mrs. Megan Smith for submitting this nomination, and I would personally like to say, well done, Mrs. Walter, and congratulations on truly being an everyday hero.
Walter. We will move to 4.02. We will have Ms. Sarah Reeves and Mr. David Parisi for our VEX Robotics World Qualifiers. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, and Dr. Kapicki. We are extremely excited to have Mr. David Parisi here to honor our VEX Robotics World Qualifiers, a very proud accomplishment of our Cabarrus County Schools.
Thank you, Sarah. Board members, Dr. Kapicki and our Cabarrus County community, tonight I have the distinct privilege of presenting to you the remaining four Cabarrus County Schools' competitive robotics teams that qualified for the 2022 VEX World Championships. These teams qualified for this amazing world competition through their performance at the North Carolina State Championships held at J.M. Robinson High School. Our C.C. Griffin Robotics Team went up against the top 516 teams from roughly 40 different countries. Joining us tonight is Shub Sir Vastava, and Shub has on his phone, joining us virtually, Ms. Kat Darby. Not able to join us tonight for the C.C. Griffin-Gryphon Robotics was Samantha Berlin, Axel Rivera, and Zach Stewart. Shub is joined tonight by Coach Haley Reed. Our three J.M. Robinson Bulldog Teams. The J.M. Robinson High School Teams had their hands filled at the VEX World Championships, going up against just 812 other high schools from 40 different countries. Joining us tonight from Team B, Fellowship of the Rings, Jared Hastings, Connor Dunn, and Matthew Bryan, unable to join us is Victoria Gallagher. Robinson C Team, Blitza Bunga, Jacob Skinner, Ariana Min, Anish Satish, and Charlie Duffel, unable to join in us is Jayden Brown. And our E Team, and state champions, team name, "Pleased to Beat You." And I will add this, when I seen that name, I said, "You guys better be able to back it up." And they did. Morgan Gregory, Connor Boggs, Elizabeth Cox, and not able to join us tonight, Deandre Niffey Ivory. Congratulations, gentlemen, ladies. And finally, tonight, I get to wrap up the 2021-22 CCS Competitive VEX Season by presenting to you the VEX IQ Worlds Elementary Innovate Division Judges Award winners. Our very own Weddington Hills Elementary School Wildcat Robotics Team Circuit. Let's give it up for them. Joining us tonight, William Dobbs, Anderson Highsmith, Grady Tucker, unable to join us, Henry Hawkins. We also have with us Coach Farrah Milby and Ms. Amy Peters. Congratulations, guys. Nice trophy.
Okay, Board members, and our last item under 4.03 will be the Scholar Circle Award presentation, and I would ask that Board Member Carolyn Carpenter join me at the podium. Board members, you have before you the absolute board member that has achieved the highest ranking honor of training hours probably in the state of North Carolina. So I'm going to read this just to make it easier. "A major goal of the North Carolina School Boards Association is to provide growth opportunities for school board members. Through the NCSBA Academy for School Boardmanship, school board members are provided high-quality training programs to help them effectively fulfill their responsibilities as leaders of public education in North Carolina. In addition, the program provides opportunities for school board members to meet the requirements for training. It is my privilege, on behalf of the board, to present Mrs. Carolyn Carpenter the Scholar Circle Award from the North Carolina School Boards Association. The Scholar Circle level indicates that she has completed more than 901 hours of training. Congratulations, Ms. Carpenter does spend a lot of time getting the training hours that not only is necessary, but that benefits the board on our behalf as well, that all of us don't have to attend, and she keeps us up to date on the ones that were not there. So thank you very much.
One thing I can say, you can never quit learning. This is a job that you have to stay up on top of things because it's ever-changing, and that's why I think it's so important. And thank you for y'all always...
Well, you are the epitome of that, and that is a great statement from a board member.
Well, I appreciate it, and y'all are always helping me, and all of us do that, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Board members, let's move to items under number 5.01, Approval of Minutes. May I have a motion that the board approve the minutes for the open session meetings for May 2nd, 2022 and May 9th, 2022?
So move. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Ms. Adcock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. Now, we will move to items under number 6.01, which starts with the Board Chair Comments, and the only thing that I have tonight is I just want to remind everyone that we will have our Legislative Agenda Meeting on July the 11th with our legislators who will join us here at the Ed Center, and also to have your meeting calendars prepared for a little bit later on tonight. And with that, I will pass it over to 6.02 for the Superintendent Comments. Dr. Kapicki.
Thank you, Mrs. Remsley. First, I would ask Dr. Bush if she could please come to the podium for another special recognition this evening. Dr. Bush?
I'm going to ask Ms. Ashton Berry and Dr. Michael Williams. Ashton, would you join us at the podium, please, ma'am? As you know, Ashton has been the Cabarrus County Schools Teacher of the Year for 2021-22 and a regional, the Regional Teacher of the Year. We're very proud of that. This will be Ashton's final board meeting as our Teacher of the Year. She is on her way to Africa, and then in July will be at NCAT as one of the leaders at NCAT. So she continues to lead in the profession, and we're very proud, but we wanted to recognize her Year of Service. Ashton joined Cabarrus County Schools and WR Odell in 2017. She earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in elementary education from Appalachian State and is pursuing a Master's in Curriculum and Instruction from Appalachian.
Earned.
Earned? What did I say?
Last year.
In 2020, she was the recipient of the WF &amp; Moselle Costner Partner Endowed Scholarship awarded by the College of Education at Appalachian State. Among her other honors are membership in the National Society for Collegiate Scholars, the Honor Society of Phi Kappa Phi, and the Kappa Delta Pi International Honor Society. As a strong teacher leader, Ashton has served in a variety of roles. These include remote learning content creator, curriculum writing, mentor teacher, service learning professional development facilitator, grade-level reading intervention specialist, school improvement leadership team, remote learning committee chair, MTSS team member, and core phonics training facilitator for beginning teachers. Presently, she is teaching all, all of the children at WR Odell as the Learn, Serve, and Engage Teacher. Dr. Sandy Ward states, "Ms. Berry is a dedicated educator. She works to meet the individual needs of all of her students. Ms. Berry is a wonderful teammate and colleague. She consistently shares quality resources and strategies that all educators could use. She believes that every student's culture should be embraced and celebrated. This year, Ms. Berry virtually welcomed all of her students' families into her virtual classroom to share their customs and traditions. She also works to nurture the social and emotional needs of her students. Her calming presence allows students to feel valued and at ease in her classroom, which encourages students to do their best work. We are truly blessed to have Ms. Berry as part of the Odell community." As the liaison to the Board of Education, Ashton has presented a monthly spotlight on the great things our teachers are doing. In addition, she has provided invaluable feedback to the board in their decision-making process. She is taking on a leadership role with our beginning teachers and our teacher leader cohort as we continue in human resources to leverage her amazing capacity to lead and to teach and to build capacity in other people. So Ashton, we want to recognize that, tell you how grateful we are that you chose Cabarrus County Schools, and that we are grateful you are with us. We did a little digging, and we found that you like coffee, so there's a couple of bags of Costa Rican coffee, one of my favorites, from a little plantation called Cafe Brit. We understand you like trail mix, so there's some trail mix in individual bags for you to put in your bag as you fly over to Africa. Some flowers, we hear you like daisies. And then tomorrow, you should have in your inbox a gift card for one of your other favorite places, Tacos for Life, which is also one of our favorites in HR. So congratulations, thank you for your service to us, and have a wonderful summer.
Bush. And Ash and I would just like to say thank you for your service this year. We appreciate all you have done to advocate for our students and the Cabarrus County School System, and also advocating for your teachers. I've had many conversations with you, and I respect your advocacy and where you stand in trying to support all of our teachers and our students, so I thank you for that. And I know that you're not going away, you're going to continue to be a strong presence here in the Cabarrus County School System, and we're very fortunate to have you. So thank you very much for all you've done for our students, our teachers, and the community of Cabarrus County. All the best. Angie, welcome aboard. In our next presentation, I've asked Rusty Parker to give a brief overview presentation this evening on a software system that we are planning to implement with our CTE programs and our students in terms of allowing them to orientate themselves and discover for themselves some potential future careers. This is something that we are partnering with the county, excuse, we are partnering with the Chamber of Commerce with, who has asked the county commissioners to support this initiative. It costs us nothing to do this. It is my understanding through my conversation with Mr. Parker that this Edge Factor software was something that we used in 2017, 2018 that was supported by the Economic Community Workforce Development Board. So we've used this in the past, and then obviously, we had the last two years of in and out of school that's kind of caused us a little bit of discontinuation of this particular product. So the Chamber has gone to the county and asked them to support this. My understanding is that they are, we do anticipate that they will support this at the June 20th meeting. The, I want to be clear on this, no data, so the Chamber will have the, I don't want to say control, the Chamber is asking to use this. Us and Conapla School District are partnering with the Chamber to have our kids be able to use this software package, but the Chamber is not going to have any data on our students, and will have no ability to see any data. The only thing they're going to see is usage, and in fact, a number of times that our students have used this. So if they use it 100 times in a month, 300 times in a month, that's it. They won't see any identifying data of students. The other neat thing about this is that the Chamber anticipates creating a community page that is going to bring all of the Cabarrus County businesses hopefully onto this website so that our students can access the website and see what career opportunities exist in the Cabarrus County area. Because one of the things, we want to make sure that our kids understand that there are many opportunities career-wise here in Cabarrus County, that they don't have to leave the area to become employed if they pick up a particular skill. So I'm going to Rusty kind of go over that a little bit with you this evening, but this is the software package called Edge Factor. Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Dr. Kapicki. Good evening, Board members. Dr. Kapicki asked me if I would say a few words about Edge Factor because it is a product that we used in 2017. The marketing plan for Edge Factor is that they don't approach a school system directly. What they do is they approach a community organization such as the Chamber, the Workforce Development Board, because Central Atlanta Workforce Development Board helped us the first time, and then also an Economic Development Commission. So they market to those types of organizations, not directly to a school system. So when we used it previously, I never spoke with a person from Edge Factor, it was all handled through the Workforce Development Board. But in five years, a lot has changed. When this product actually came out, it's probably about a 10-year-old company, they've been around for a little while. But when we were approached the first time, the way the funding model was set up was, some of you may remember Leigh Ann Nixon when she was the existing industry rep at the Economic Development Commission, she approached me about it, and then brought in the Workforce Development Board, and they funded it. But it was only funded for one year. And so that was the challenge, is since it wasn't something that I controlled as a contract through my department or that I worked with, it was a little bit of a challenge with how long is it going to last, and it became a product that kind of fell by the wayside at that time. They have made tremendous advances in this product since. Now, it used to be that when it started, it was all about advanced manufacturing, and it was about engineering, that type of career fields. And then through time, they have changed it to where they include multiple careers, which is why we are so excited about the product. When we had it the first time, I used it a lot at J.M. Robinson because it was part of their academy model, and it fit very well with J.M. Robinson's academy. But now, it pretty much fits with anything I do in my department because it's for every career. But just so you know, the reason I asked them to put this up on the screen is if you scroll down a little bit, there is, we can see it from here, there is a Browse as Guest button, so if you want to go in and see what content is in the site, you can log in as a guest. And what happens is Edge Factor is really like YouTube on steroids, just for education purposes only, and a lot of the videos that you see in there are based on careers, and it's very broad careers. So some of the, some of it's how to be, if you want to be a nurse, what does that look like? And they're interviewing a nurse on the screen. If they want to be a school teacher, they interview school teachers and kind of tell them about what it is. But also for my department, what comes along with is they provide curriculum. So there's also some curriculum and lesson plans that teachers can use to build into their daily routine. So what we've tried to do in our department is look at now the contract that is being considered now, and I think goes before the commissioners next week, I believe. It's a three-year agreement, so I know that it will not be going away, which is a thrill to me because I think the first time, we lost it after a year, and that's all we had. But now it is being considered for a multi-year contract, and the thing that Dr. Kapicki alluded to is we don't pay a dime for it. It is free to our department, which I love. I love free things, so very good thing for us. Like I said, the product has been updated considerably, so if you log in as a guest, you can see all the careers, and I think that you can actually log in and see some of the lesson planning content that's involved in it. I didn't want to go through all that today. Oh, there you go. Thank you. That was good timing. There's how you log into Edge Factor. For us in our department, one of the things over the past two years specifically is this products like this that are web-based have become more and more popular, obviously, with what we've been through with the pandemic. And that's why Edge Factor is such an important piece of our curriculum and our product or in our pathways, is because students can actually use this at their fingertips. And one thing that Dr. Kapicki alluded to too is that some counties around us that have used this, I know Lincoln County uses it fairly regularly, Iredale has used it, and what they do is they tailor a landing page just to their community. So a lot of the videos that you see in there will be from companies that are in their community. So for us, if we were to go this direction, then what we would do is have partners within our area here, so hopefully Corning or any, those types of companies, they would be willing to video some of their employees in the openings that they have so that we could share that with our students, which is what we want, and hopefully to use that to keep students here in Cabarrus County when they start working and not go other places. So that's really the focus of Edge Factor and the gist of it, so I was going to ask if there's any questions about it, or if anything I can share with you.
Board members, comments or questions? I'll begin with Ms. Sandage.
So free sounds delightful. I'll say that first of all. I just had a few questions. So is this for a year only, or has that been identified at this point?
It was originally, I believe, discussed as a year contract, but now it has been promoted as a three-year contract, so it is, it's changed. It's now a three-year agreement that they're looking to put together.
Okay, and did I understand correctly that the county will pay for this, for those three years?
Yeah, the way that Edge Factor markets their product is they do market to community-based organizations, so that's how it came through the Chamber first, and they reached out to them, and then the Chamber has reached out to the county commissioners for funding to make that a reality, so it's going that direction.
Okay, and last question. How does Edge Factor market to the surrounding businesses to get them to upload their information so students can actually see it?
One of the things they do is, the reason they partner with the community-based organizations like Chambers or Workforce Development Boards is because those are the business contacts, those are the pieces of the puzzle for workforce development in our community that would have those names and contacts. that would have those names and contacts. So they would be the ones responsible for reaching out to a company and asking, do you have somebody that could video, and that type of thing. It wouldn't come through the school system. I would, none of my staff would be responsible for videoing or doing anything like that.
That wasn't my question, but thanks for answering that. I guess I'm trying to make sure that it's like user-friendly, and so that students are actually going to be able to see companies in our area and be able to access them. So how does that information get to those companies so that they will want their information in the software for our kiddos?
Yeah, we, one of the things that we are looking to do is, with it being specific to Cabarrus County, is including it in our curriculum guides as a supplement. One of the things I don't think we did very well when we used it back in 2017 was to show where it fit within objectives in specific curriculum areas. It did very well in STEM, like I said, but some other areas really were at a loss. So our goal is to really put it within specific objectives in our curriculum so that if I'm working with a teacher that teaches health sciences, they know that in Objective 101, this is a video that you could use for that. So that's what we're trying to do on the teacher side. And then also on the other side with the businesses, the ones that I communicate with, and I'll share that with them, that this is what we're trying to do to promote health sciences or promote trades or whatever.
Thank you.
Mr. Walter.
So is there something in here for every one of our programs?
I need to go through it and make sure I know every program area. I know that it has changed to where it includes more than STEM. And so it is expanded a lot to where there's other areas in there. Healthcare I do knows in there. So I don't know every pathway because I haven't really compared it to my crosswalk for my pathways, which I need to do that.
That's something you're going to do this summer, or is that?
That's a summer initiative. Yes, sir.
What kind of data is it going to give you to make decisions with?
One thing that we have really tried to do in our department consistently, and actually it's now stepped out of CTE, and it's a full career continuum of every child in our school system, is to get them to create a four-year plan. So part of that plan is looking at what jobs are available, what careers could I go into, what are my interests? So this very cleanly fits into that career development planning phase that we're doing. We use a product called Naviance to do career planning, but it doesn't have videos quite like this or curriculum built in. So it's kind of a sister product. And those two together will help us create career plans for students.
Now again, like she said, it doesn't cost us anything, so.
Doesn't cost us anything.
And if it can help our students, then I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Blackwell?
Hey, Rusty.
Hey.
All right, so I just have a couple of questions for you. So I know that you haven't vetted through all of this yet. Should we find anything on there, either a parent who is able to go in and view this, or a student, or any of us as we go on and kind of search through the information? Should we find anything that is inappropriate? Who do we report that to? And are you able to then have that removed from the Cabarrus County piece of this? Or will we have to go to Edge Factor, or will the Chamber handle that? How's that, how does that work?
Yeah, and a lot of that is still being determined in some areas, not all. Some of it, I do know the answer to that question, some I have to ask. But right now, I have not even met with Ben already. I know he's in the room. He's over our technology department now, so he's probably going to get me that I called him out. But as of right now, we haven't even met with Ben to vet anything as far as student identifiable data. We really have not even got that far yet. Really, we didn't do a whole lot of legwork yet because we didn't know if the county commissioners were going to approve it. So we're still in that, that phase of looking, is this really going to come to fruition? So once we know that definitely, then we can sit down and start looking at things like what you said with our attorneys and making sure that if anything does come up that's harmful to children, how do we handle that? So I think that's the next phase. Step two is to look at that right there.
Okay, and then also, I know that you talked about no student info would be given to the Chamber or specifically out there for them. But what about to these businesses? So if a student wants to access that information and wants to find out about a specific job or company within Cabarrus County, do those companies then get our students' information and then reach out to them? Or how does that correlate, or do we not know yet?
Well, very good question on that. A lot of times when we're communicating with companies, my coordinators in my department, they handle that. They are the go-between between the company and the student. So never would there be a student that just reaches out to a company on their own. Sometimes that happens if it's a parent that works there, you know, that's a different animal. But all of our coordinators actually work through that process, and they're the middleman. So that if there is a student that's interested in a certain company, then they kind of reach out to that company. There's an orientation packet they have to fill out. Everything's documented about how they're going to be communicated with and that type of thing. So there is a process for that. So the student won't just reach out to a company or them the other direction the company reached to them. That should not happen.
And do we plan on having this link uploaded to our Cabarrus County website, just like some of the other links, so that parents will be able to easily access this and go on as a guest and be able to view everything?
I would hope that we could go that far with it, yeah. I would like to have it at least posted on our CTE website, which we need to do a few upgrades to that. But I would love for it to be on the district website as a link, as a resource, so, yeah.
All right, well, that's all the questions I have right now, but I might have more.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Ms. Carpenter?
Same thing. I always have more questions, you know that. But I think it's a great opportunity that we're opening the doors for our students to get jobs locally and to stay at home here in Cabarrus County. We always want that. But again, we do want to make sure that we're opening the doors for our local businesses. And so we want to make sure that this application is easy for our companies to be able to be accessible for. So that's one thing I want to make sure that this app will be able to do that. And I noticed that on this application, it says for personal use. Make sure whatever that for personal use, what is in that application? Because looking at this, that kind of throws a red flag up for me. So check that out when you do that because that does kind of throw a red flag up for me. And some of the questions that Laura had asked, that would be questions we definitely want to have answered. Because when these parents go in, they want to make sure that, you know, those questions would be answered. And those are a lot of the same questions that I have because we do have to make sure that the data that the children put in, that it is protected and everything. But it sounds like this would be a good application, and we do want to make sure that we do the things we need to do for our children. But thanks for doing this. Thank you.
Ms. Adcock?
I really don't have a lot of questions. I think the board members have asked really excellent questions. But I would like to thank the Cabarrus Chamber of Commerce for partnering with us in this project and just giving our students an opportunity to really look at a career path and how they can move from one goal to the next. So this is really a great program. Thank you for sharing that with us.
And we have Mr. Furr joining us remotely. Mr. Furr, are you there? Tim, are you online? Okay, we'll try to reestablish. Dr. Kapikie, I'll hand it back over to you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, there you are. We hear you. Did you have any comments or questions?
No, only comments. I think the board asked great questions, which covered pretty much everything that I was thinking about as well. But, you know, it's still, it's still premature since the commissioners haven't voted on it yet. So I'm sure Rusty will have an update later that we can, after he did send it over. So thank you.
Also for the board's information, in the future, if you would like, we could have Larissa Hoffman, who is one of the major presenters at Edge Factor, present to the board if they have a deeper interest. I also have just recently received, actually today, a catalog that I'll send to the boards. PDF, which is the catalog of some of the programs on there. And if you have any questions, let me know. And, you know, I have spoken to one of our commissioners and had some really good questions that they had as well. And, you know, again, I think Mr. Parker's done a good job presenting this, so I'll leave it at that. And Mr. Parker, thank you very much. And then lastly, I'd like to take a moment to congratulate the class of 2022. As many of you know, we had graduation ceremonies at the Cabarrus Arena Event Center Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. It was a very well-done event all the way around for everyone involved. We had more than 2,100 students across the stage, received their high school diplomas in front of their families and crowds. And we're excited for them as they move on to the next phase in their life and, you know, change the world as they see fit. And we wish them nothing but the best, and we wish them well. I'd like to thank the board publicly for their support and being there and attending the event. It's always nice to celebrate together the major achievement, which is graduation. It's what we aim to do with our kids, to get them through that graduation point. And it just says a lot to have the Board of Education there supporting the kids and being part of the process. So I thank all of you for your support in attending that. They were, they were long days, but they were great days. And I also want to thank everyone who had a hand in planning that ceremony, especially our graduation coordinators and school staff, Mr. Ken Robinson and his staff at the arena, all of our law enforcement partners. I can't say enough good things about our Chief Deputy Van Shaw and the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department. I cannot tell you how many times I've reached out to them over the course of this school year, and the answer is just always yes. If I just tell them I have a need for anything, they're there in a second to support us. And it's just, it's a great comfort knowing that we have that partnership, and I deeply appreciate it. As well as Chief Gary Gasek from the Concord City Police. I've had some conversations with Chief Gasek, and he as well, and his officers are always there to support our kids. And it's just, they're good partnerships. And again, I can't say enough good things about both the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department and the Concord City Police. They are just wonderful to our school system and to our students and everyone involved. So I thank them very much for all their help and support, not just this weekend, but throughout the school year. You have a very, very demanding, difficult job. But I will tell you that you have my admiration, my respect, and my support in all that you do. So I thank you for that. To my cabinet, I thank all of you for being there as well and supporting our kids. It's a lot of your work that goes into that, to see our kids graduate. So it's appreciative to see you there. And then the two groups I really want to express my most sincere gratitude to are the teachers. The teachers of Cabarrus County School System, from our preschool classrooms all the way up to our seniors. Everything you do helps these students achieve the moment of graduation. And without the teachers in the system, we would not be where we are today. You are the foundation of our success, and we deeply, deeply appreciate all the efforts that you have gone through to help our kids get there. Your job is not easy, and we can never say thank you enough. But I can tell you this, we are so appreciative of all the work that you do, and we continue to have conversations as to how we can make it a better situation for all of you in your situation in the classroom on a daily basis. We understand the stresses and pressures have changed, and we want to make sure we're doing everything that we can to support you. So those conversations will continue. Lastly, the parents. You entrust us by sending your kids to our school system every day. It's a huge responsibility. It's a task that we do not take for granted, and we appreciate that trust. We appreciate that faith that you have in the system. There are 33,500 or so students in the Cabarrus County School System and growing, 44 schools, 360-plus square miles, a budget over $400 million. So it is a large investment by the entire community, namely our parents, in making sure that you give them a first-class education. It's your support and your efforts that we work with, with our students on a daily basis. And without you and without that support, we know we don't get our kids across that stage. So to all the parents, we thank you very much for all that you do. And then lastly, I just want to remind folks, our school nutrition program will begin offering our summer meals on Wednesday, June 15th. And you can find information about meal locations and other important information on our district website. And look under this, if you select school nutrition and you look under the Find It Fast section, you'll see all that information there for those meals. And again, as I, as we, I don't want to say end because I don't think it's ending, the work continues. But as I complete my first year here and we graduate our seniors, it's a culmination of all the hard work of everyone. I'm very grateful and humbled by all the support that I have from the Board of Education to all the people sitting in the audience here tonight, to the wonderful cabinet that I get to work with, the people that I get to engage with in the community. This is a just really genuinely caring, kind, wonderful community that supports education. It's a comfort to know that you walk in every day, and people really do have kids' best interests at heart. And I appreciate that immensely, and it's been a joy to be the superintendent. And I will continue to try and do my best to make it a better system and to make sure that we're always focused on kids. So I thank everyone involved, and that's all. Mrs. Grimsley?
Thank you. And now we will move to 6.03, board attorney comments. We'll have Mr. Vogel to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, board members and Dr. Kapikie. I am here to present to you something terrific, and that is the formation of the Consortium of State School Boards Association, the COSSBA. This is a national nonpartisan alliance that was formed by 22 state school board associations, including the North Carolina School Board Association, that left in recent months the National School Board Association. As of today, 25 different state school board associations have left the National School Board Association. This new entity, the Consortium of State School Board Associations, welcomes all state school board associations to join. This is not an organization that you, as a local Board of Education, would join. And it's not an entity that would expect you to pay any dues at all to. You continue to have your relationship with the North Carolina School Board Association, and the North Carolina School Board Association will have a relationship now with the Consortium of State School Board Associations. However, you as school board, local school board members, can attend COSSBA, that's what it goes by, COSSBA, conferences and symposium. The purposes of the consortium is to provide leadership training, to provide professional development, to provide federal advocacy, and to create a legal alliance, lawyers who represent school board associations. So in that sense, it's similar to the National School Board Association. The document that you have in front of you is taken from the very, very new website of COSSBA. But your state school board association, the North Carolina School Board Association, is one of the 22 founding members of the consortium. There is an event coming up in September called the Urban Board Alliance Symposium in, taking place in Atlanta. If you scroll down, if we scroll down to page nine, September 8th and 9th in Atlanta. It's called Best Practices for Students and Schools in Challenging Environments. Registration begins soon. Registration opens July 1st. So you can attend. That is something that you, as a board, would have to pay for, for members to attend. But it's optional. That's an exciting opportunity. So this is now what your state school board association belongs to. Do you have any questions?
Board members, comments or questions? I'll begin with Ms. Adcock.
I think this is really good news that we do have something that is going to take the place of the other organization and that it's nonpartisan. I really like seeing that. So for membership, you said that the school system does not have to pay to join this, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And then it's really pretty much about resources, conferences, professional development?
Exactly. Leadership training, professional development, advocacy at the federal level in Washington, D.C. on behalf of state school board associations, which of course represent the local school board associations like you, and then a legal, a lawyer alliance collaboration.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Carpenter?
I agree. And do you have a listing of the 23 states that are involved in that?
Yes, ma'am. There are 22 founding members, and that is on the bottom of page six and the top of page seven of the document in front of you.
Okay.
But the consortium is open to all state school board associations, presumably whether they have left the National School Board Association or not. But again, as of today, in fact, there was a new one today, Nebraska, 25 state school board associations have left the National School Board Association.
Well, I agree. I think that's wonderful with what we experienced last year and what me, excuse me, myself, what I have seen over the years and some of the things we've experienced. I think it is wonderful. And I- And I am so glad in what we experienced last year, I think it's a great, great thing. And thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Blackwell.
No, just thank you for presenting on this. And I guess, you know, as I kind of look at all of this and have questions moving forward, I may reach out to you with those. But I appreciate you bringing this to us and I hope that this will be a much better representation than what we had with the previous. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Walter.
I appreciate the update. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Ms. Sandage.
I don't have any questions, but thanks for the presentation and getting us this information. Looks like I'll be trying to do a Carolyn and get some training hours.
You're welcome.
Good luck with that. Mr. Furr, any comments or questions?
No questions or thoughts, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, board members, we will move to reports, 7.01. Are there any board members that have any reports? Ms. Sandage, I'll begin with you.
I don't have any reports, but I just wanted to echo what Dr. Kapicki said. So this is my first time as a board member on the stage at graduation in kind of a, well, normal capacity. And it was just amazing to see all of the things that we worked so hard for as a team. And I mean that with the students and the parents and the educators and, you know, all the staff in our buildings to, you know, help those kids, make sure that they were successful and to see that come into fruition from the stage was just amazing. So I'm glad that I was able to be a part of that. And I just want to say congratulations to our entire community for all of the graduates that graduated from high school this past weekend.
Great. Mr. Walter.
Yeah, I think I'm just going to echo that as well. I thought it was a fantastic weekend and obviously an awful lot of effort that goes into preparing that to make it a special occasion for our students and families. I really enjoyed the band performances and the chorus performances as well. And just a shout out to all the folks that helped put this together. The photography was great. It was nice to have a website where everybody could go to and watch the videos live, watch the graduations live if you could be in attendance as well. Thank you to all who were a part of it.
Ms. Blackwell.
I'm going to echo the same sentiments, that this is the best part of what we get to do on the school board. I do want to brag a little bit on Dr. Kapicki. So I have never seen a superintendent leave every single graduation and go up front with all of the chaos and all of the parents and all of the students taking pictures and literally go and speak to all of them outside up front. It was just such a great thing to see out of our superintendent interacting with all of the community and the children. So thank you for that, Dr. Kapicki. I think that that speaks volumes about what you do and what is important to you. Also wanted to remind everyone that the Literature and Supplemental Material Committee will be meeting on this Wednesday, which is June the 15th, at 6 o'clock at JM Robinson. So community members are welcome, but we will have our committee there and we look forward to seeing you guys on Wednesday night. So thank you.
Ms. Carpenter.
I would like to echo the same as my other board members have said. Again, thanking everyone, our staff members that had participated and also congratulating all our graduating seniors for their accomplishments. And again, thanking everyone that did participate in the, you know, the community also. It all went so well. And again, that is the highlight. This is why I feel I do what I do. When we see those students walk across that stage, that's what it's all about. And it just brings, it warms my heart. I really, that's the highlight of my year. And so I was, I was just, it just like, it just made me feel warm all over. But it is, that's what, that's what we all work for and the parents work for, to see their children walk across that stage. But it was just a wonderful, wonderful weekend. And, but we do thank everybody that did participate. And again, Dr. Kapicki, you did such a wonderful job for that. And I know the students appreciated everything you did. But it was a great weekend, just a great weekend. And we do appreciate everything that was done. And too, we just want to say, we hope everyone has a safe return from their beach trips. I always worry about that. But thank y'all for everything you've done.
Ms. Adcock.
I'll just say ditto on all of the above. And I just want to say that I have to come up and bring up my graduation standards to Ms. Carpenter's standards next year because she changed clothes every single graduation and had school colors on, which I think was representative of how passionate you are about it. So next year, we're on, right?
Well, I saw that there was a competition between Ms. Blackwell and Ms. Carpenter. So I hate that I wasn't able to participate and I'll ditto the sentiments of my fellow board members. It was tough to watch, but, you know, but it was great. It's awesome. It is the epitome of what we all do. And we appreciate all the hard work and effort that goes into it. You do not know what goes on behind those scenes unless you've participated. So I will say, congratulations to the class of 2022, myself.
Mr. Furr, any comments or questions? Tim?
Yeah.
Any comments or questions?
Yes, just like the other board member said, it's what we do, it's the best part of our job. And there's truly miracles that walk across that stage every single year. And I'd also like to thank Lori Furr and Sarah for taking good care of the board members. We get treated like, you know, like kings and queens during graduation weekend. They take so great care of us and I want them to know that we certainly appreciate it. And that's all.
That was great and you are so right. Thank you. Mr. Dr. Kapicki, something else?
You're always going to, you're always going to forget somebody and I'm sure I'm going to forget somebody even after I try and amend this. But to Mr. Furr, just said, I definitely want to say thank you to Lori Furr because she was fantastic in making sure that everything was set up nice and keeping us all on the right page during the weekend. So I appreciate her help. I think, I also want to say a special thank you to Ben Allred because he really has the overwhelming responsibility to make sure from A to Z, everything goes right. And from an organizational standpoint, he did a spectacular job and I appreciate his efforts on that. To Dr. Probst, my special sincere thanks because you helped me organize a lot of the wisdom that we shared with the students this weekend and keeping me on task. So I appreciate that. And the person who never gets enough credit, who really is the person who controls my life, is Sarah Hammons. And Sarah made sure that I was on time, in fact, early, and just did a super job at everything from beginning to the end. And I appreciate you, Sarah, and all the hard work that you did. So thank you very much for all of your support and all the efforts you put in this weekend. So thank you. And I'll close on that.
Thank you. Okay, we will move to 8.01 and we will have our Cabarrus County School Spotlight on Educators. And for one of the last times, we will have our Teacher of the Year, Ashton Berry, back to the podium. Good evening again.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Kapicki and board members. Before I begin tonight's spotlight, as a member of the Odell family, I want to thank you for taking the time to honor Marsha Dickinson tonight with the Moment of Silence. She was lovingly known as Ms. Marsha by students and staff, and she is truly a beloved member of the Odell family who will be forever missed. Marsha made a permanent mark on all of our lives with her loving spirit and her incredible sense of humor. She was artistic and creative, compassionate and kind. She was golden. And she always made Odell such a beautiful place to learn and work. We love her and we will miss her very much. And with that being said, thank you so much for another opportunity tonight to highlight the amazing things happening in schools across the Cabarrus County School District. The teachers that you will hear about tonight, like so many across our district, continue to go above and beyond as they strive for and achieve excellence each and every day through their instruction. Tonight, I want to present you with a spotlight on the service learning that happened across our district during the 2021-2022 school year. According to Vanderbilt University, service learning is defined as a form of experiential learning and education where learning occurs through a cycle of action and reflection as students seek to achieve real objectives for their community and deeper understanding and skills for themselves. In other words, service learning is an instructional approach that allows students to recognize real-world problems that they care about in their communities and decide to take action in order to affect change while working towards mastery of their content standards. It combines learning objectives with service to help students become agents of change. We have the privilege of hearing from three schools this evening, Weddington Hills Elementary, Coltrane Webb STEM Elementary, and my own school, WR Odell Elementary School. Our first service learning spotlight is on the instruction of Kate Highsmith at Weddington Hills Elementary School. Kate couldn't be here with us tonight, but she prepared some slides for us. At Weddington Hills, service learning in kindergarten through fifth grade happens as the students work to maintain the pollinator gardens at WHES. Pictured here are some of Ms. Highsmith's students working in one of their pollinator gardens. Ms. Highsmith explains that service learning through maintaining the pollinator gardens meets requirements set in their Sharing the Planet IB Unit of Study. In kindergarten, students study how plants grow and people and how people and animals impact each other. In first grade, they learn about how changes in an ecosystem affect the plants and animals. In second grade, students learn about animal life cycles with a focus on the monarch butterfly. In third, they learn about plant survival and the function of plants. In fourth grade, students learn about animal behaviors and adaptations and how technology advancements impact animal and plant life. And in fifth grade, they learn about how ecosystems are interconnected and they learn about migration of animals and people. Pictured here, we see several insects and animals that students regularly encounter in the pollinator garden, like bumblebees, worms, beetles and butterflies. And in their classroom, WHES students learn about an endangered animal specific to North Carolina, which is the monarch butterfly. They spend time observing the life cycle of monarch butterflies and discussing specific ways to support pollinators in their own backyards. In global inquiry and design, WHES students also use technology to guide inquiry and learn how technology is changing growing methods near and far. For example, they use the Monarch app for independent inquiry and they observe how scientists have grown plants in lunar soil. In global inquiry and design, literacy is also supported through related texts. And texts come to life because students can see their actions reflected in the literature. WHES students are also able to make real-world connections using what they have learned to create entries for local and statewide contests, such as the Soil and Water Bookmark Contest and the Farm-to-School Calendar Contest. All in all, the service learning that happens at Weddington Hills in Ms. Highsmith's global classroom is an incredible asset to our district because it teaches students that even young kids can take action to impact the planet in a positive way. Our next service learning spotlight is on Coltrane Webb STEM Elementary School. Fifth grade teacher, Ms. Brooks, was kind enough to record a video for us to watch tonight that will tell us all about the amazing things happening at Coltrane. Hi, my name is Brittany Brooks and I am the teacher at Coltrane Webb STEM Elementary School. Tonight, I have the privilege to share with you about a service learning project that my fifth grade students participated in this school year. In the fifth reading unit of fifth grade, one of the goals for students is that they will understand that readers read multiple texts with an analytical lens in order to uncover critical social issues and take action in our society. After identifying social issues that characters faced in our Read Alouds and Book Club texts, I challenge students to think of an issue in our society that they feel passionate about and would like to do something about. My students generated ideas on ways they can address the issue in our local or global communities. Many of my students were concerned about hunger and the war in Ukraine. Together, we generated a list of ethical organizations we could support that addressed the issue. Fifty-nine percent of fifth grade students voted to support World Central Kitchen in a tiebreaker vote. World Central Kitchen is a worldwide organization that fights to address food insecurity through long-term resilience programs and freshly-prepared meals for families affected by natural disasters and humanitarian crises around the globe. Some of the reasons that my students shared for supporting World Central Kitchen were, "I think our school should support this organization because when wars and natural disasters happen, people have to leave their homes and they don't have enough food to last them a while. World Central Kitchen helps scared people by giving them more meals and I want to help them have the equipment to cook meals for these people." Another student shared that we should help World Central Kitchen because they serve everybody that's in a crisis like Ukraine, since they are in a war, they are serving them food. Another reason is because if we were in a crisis or in a war like Ukraine, we would want people to help us out and give us food. We don't know how it is in other places to not have food. So after I was able to secure support from our wonderful administration and PTCEO, students brainstormed ways that we would be able to raise the most money. We decided to host a penny war between grade levels by setting up jars in the cafeteria for students to vote at lunch. The winning grade level earned extra recess and a popsicle party. Our assistant principal, Mrs. Hamilton, led her leadership group in creating a video that was shared during morning announcements. And together, as a school community, Coltrane Webb STEM Elementary School raised $571.44 for World Central Kitchen. Since we began this service learning project, World Central Kitchen has fed refugees from Ukraine, as well as families impacted by floods in Bangladesh, landslides in Brazil, mass shootings in Buffalo, New York, and Uvalde, Texas, and Hurricane Agatha in Mexico. By participating and hosting this fundraiser for an organization that addresses social issues in our world, students were able to see how they can impact the world in a positive way from right where they're at with what they have. Thank you so much for allowing me the time to share the amazing difference our students are making in our world. Okay. And finally, service learning at Odell Elementary School is our last spotlight of the evening. On a personal note, I am so proud of our Odell Dragons and their service learning journeys this year. They are powerful, determined and insightful students who are passionate about making a positive difference in their world. Tonight, we have a video about the service learning happening at Odell through a collaborative Tonight, I will be spotlighting the service learning happening at Odell Elementary School for you. At Odell, students have an encore class called Learn, Serve, Engage. In this class, each grade level completes at least one rigorous, extensive service learning project per year. These projects are completely student-designed, student-led and curriculum-based. The structure of the Learn, Serve, Engage course follows the six stages of service learning: look and listen, examine issues, develop a plan, take action, review outcomes, and showcase results. At Odell, we believe that learning should be applicable, transferable, and relevant to the reality in which each of our students live. We want them to be empowered to recognize real-world problems and then design and implement a plan to solve them. Learn, Serve, Engage helps us accomplish this goal. First, our students complete the look and listen phase. They brainstorm together about issues in their school, community and world that they have noticed and that they care about. After brainstorming long lists, students narrow their focus to five or six main issues that they want to take to the next phase of service learning. This year, some of those issues included water inequality, deforestation, refugee families in need, plastic pollution, and student mental wellness. From there, student learning teams chose one topic out of the narrowed-down From there, student learning teams chose one topic out of the narrowed-down list to research together. They synthesized information from nonfiction texts, asked hard questions to ensure that they didn't accidentally exclude diverse voices and perspectives, and gave persuasive speeches to try to convince their classmates that their chosen issues were the ones that the grade level should try to improve or solve together throughout the remainder of the school year. It was a tight race after the vote, especially in 5th grade, but here are our grade-level service learning projects for the 2021-2022 school year. 3rd grade chose a monarch butterfly rescue plan, 4th grade chose a plastic pollution, and 5th grade chose our school's very first service learning project based on a social issue: student mental wellness. We were very proud of how our students became passionate participants in and advocates for their own education in the early stages of service learning. After that, it was time for each grade level to develop their plan of action. Each grade level also consulted with experts in the field of their respective projects to ensure that they were on the right track. As they planned each action step, teachers helped by aligning student ideas with 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade curriculum. This year, students designed action plans that incorporated reading, writing, science, and math standards. The 3rd graders at Odell are in a unique position because their project will follow them for two more years. Their plan consisted of writing persuasive letters to local farmers to ask them to stop using herbicides in order to help save milkweed, the plant that monarch caterpillars need to survive. 3rd graders also successfully designed and built monarch rescue garden beds using their new knowledge of area and perimeter, and with the help of community members who donated their time, skills, and resources. They ended the year by raising and releasing butterflies and making seed pods to help pollinators over the summer until they come back to school in the fall and plant their milkweed. We are excited to watch this project grow with our 3rd graders as they move to 4th grade next year. 4th grade Dragons designed an exciting plan of action as well that will follow them to 5th grade. They looked at their elected officials and advocated for policies that they thought would alleviate plastic pollution through persuasive writing. They also hosted Earth Week at Odell, which included Way Your Trash Day. On this day, each homeroom was asked to keep all of the trash that they created in one trash bag that they then carried with them everywhere they went as a class throughout the day. At the end of the day, each class weighed their trash bag, and 4th grade analyzed, represented, and interpreted the data in order to share, raise awareness, reflect, and make changes for a greener future. 4th grade also created public service announcements to be played on the morning news. They hope to use these PSAs next year as they continue their work as 5th graders. And 5th grade, we are so proud of these Dragons. Out of all the issues they could have chosen, our 5th graders decided that they wanted to help raise awareness around student mental health and wellness and to possibly help their fellow classmates with the steps of their action plan. They consulted with members of our Student Support Services team, completed in-depth research, wrote letters to lawmakers about access to mental health care and services in schools, created persuasive public service announcements, and even published an interactive mental wellness magazine that they hope to share with every library in Cabarrus County Schools. They are problem solvers, game changers, and difference makers. I was incredibly humbled by their efforts this year, not only to help their cause, but also to ensure that all perspectives and voices were represented in their work. The future is bright in the very capable hands of our 5th graders. Again, each action step was aligned with ELA, Math and Science Curriculum, so not only were they working as agents of positive change, but they were also working toward mastery of their state standards. Each grade level had a service learning celebration. 3rd grade showcased their results and celebrated the very beginning stages of their monarch rescue garden. 4th and 5th grade were excited to share the products of their collaborative efforts as well. Tonight, I'm excited to share some of them with you. Here is a public service announcement about plastic pollution from Ms. Irvin's 4th grade class.
Do you know one of the biggest problems in the world? I'll let you guess. It's plastic pollution. Plastic pollution is one of the biggest problems in the world. This problem needs to be stopped now.
Is a big problem? Plastic pollution is affecting people, animals, and even climate. Plastic pollution is also washing up on beach shores, making some beaches inhabitable.
Did you know that the greatness of the garbage patch weighs more than 79,000 metric tons and is now the twice size of Texas?
Fancy creatures eat that plastic, and one word of being animals end up on a plate.
Gosh, how do you want this trash picked here?
I don't know, there's bags, cups, everything.
Plastic makes animals die.
We won't be able to have meat.
Do you know that most outside animals live in trees and we are cutting them down?
I hope you think before you use plastic again.
We're here to create more recycling bins. Presort them into different types of recycling centers that focus on one type of plastic.
Stop online shopping because it uses four pounds of plastic. When we wrap the packages in tape and plastic in the boxes to keep it safe from breaking, it can pollute oceans, seas, rivers, and lakes. That's why we should stop using it because animals are getting killed, and it's going to pollute our clean water.
Finally, I wanted to showcase a few pages of the 5th grader's final mental wellness magazine. Each group signed up for a portion that they were most interested in, whether that was an op-ed, an interview, a poem, a piece of artwork, mental wellness tips, et cetera. Each child played an important role in the publication of their final product. Each class also included a QR code that readers can scan to watch their mental wellness Once again, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about service learning at Odell. We are incredibly proud of our agents of positive change. Go Dragons! Good evening, Madam Chair and members of...
So I want to personally thank the educators we heard from tonight for their unwavering dedication to their students and public education, and for their work to tie learning to real-world problems and issues in our community. Our school district is better because of each and every one of them. They are incredible and irreplaceable assets to Cabarrus County Schools. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your presentation. That was great. All right, board members, we will move to what is now 8.02, originally 11.01, just public comment. We have three speakers signed up tonight. I'm going to read our pre-statement, and then we will begin with the public comment section. It is now time for public comment. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, and an individual speaking for a group may be allowed up to five minutes at the discretion of the board chair. The speakers will be called in the order in which we receive the request. A person may not be substituted for a speaker, nor may one speaker donate time to another speaker. If a speaker runs out of time, then the speaker may leave the additional information with the board clerk. If a speaker or attendee willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts this meeting and refuses to leave after being asked by the board chair, then the speaker may be escorted out and could be arrested for trespassing or disrupting an official meeting. We will begin this evening with our first speaker, and that is Pam Escobar.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Pam Escobar, and I'm running for school board. I want to start by saying congratulations to all the graduates. It was not easy to get that diploma. You persevered, worked hard, and had a ton of support along the way. Your teachers and community are very proud of what you accomplished. I attended 8th grade graduation last week at Harris Road Middle School, and like any mama bear, I sat in the front row in the gym and cheered lally. There were easily 1,000 people who witnessed the end of 400 students' middle school years, years that were far from the norm. The pandemic struck when they were in 6th grade. 7th grade was partially back in the building with virtual events, but 8th grade, they were back in school full-time, although the impacts of the pandemic still lingered. Kids had to learn how to socialize, behave, and interact in person. So when they walked across the stage for their certificates, it was a moment of true accomplishment, and my heart felt like it was going to burst out of my chest. Students are resilient, but that doesn't mean mental health is where it needs to be. I've spoken to parents, school nurses, teachers, and principals about how kids still need support, and I am so thankful that the state legislator is mandating a social and emotional curriculum. I'm not thankful that they didn't provide a way to pay for it. Tonight, you will vote on the Positivity Project, which focuses on developing character. I think a consistent, daily curriculum for K-12 is an outstanding way to start the conversation about social, emotional, and mental health. The summer is a well-deserved break for students and teachers, but it's time for staff to prepare for the coming year. When you implement the Positivity Project, be prepared to measure it. Do more than just checking it off the to-do list. It's an opportunity for us to truly understand how our kids are doing. Let's implement metrics, collect the data, and let's talk about it in these meetings so the community understands. Also, we need to focus on how the kids are going to be fed this next year. Tonight, you will vote on raising the cost of student lunch. And next year, we know the federal government will stop paying for free lunch for all students. Students and families will have to fill out paperwork to qualify for free or reduced breakfast and lunch. Teachers have told me that they are worried about the kids who aren't used to filling out those forms or who have parents who don't speak English. This is the time to create a plan, to get translators in the schools, work with social workers and other community partners to reach families. All children need food to thrive and to comprehend what they are learning in school. Getting those forms filled out ensures that happens. As a school board, you're responsible for budgets. If those forms are filled out, the federal money comes in. I'm appealing to your fiscal responsibility and your humanity to take care of our kids. I'm a mama bear for yours and mine.
Thank you. And Pam, I have a quick question, since we just want some clarification. So we have a process in place for the programs that happen during the summer. So what kind of statements are there being made to you? Give us an idea. You said statements were being made, but give us an idea of what that looks like.
Statements about the school program, meaning the lunch? So yes, no, I heard tonight that on June 15th, that's going to happen, so that's great information for the public. But no, what we're concerned about is that they're going to have to fill out forms that they haven't filled out for the last two years because the federal government has just been giving free lunch to everyone. And so what they're worried about is that, you know, the kids that are harder to reach, maybe their parents aren't good at communicating, they don't read emails, they don't come in. How do you get those forms filled out so those kids can eat for free?
Were you here for our presentation that Mr. Legrand gave of how that process would go? And I think actually it was the last meeting, right?
Yes, Stephanie gave a presentation.
Right. Right, she said that that's the way for people to qualify for free or reduced lunch, but there isn't a way of making sure that we're getting to all those kids. Teachers are worried about that. They're saying that there are definitely kids that, you know, parents just don't, they aren't communicating.
The school's not communicating?
No, the parents aren't communicating with the school. So they send the kids to school, and the kids need lunch. Right now, they get it for free, but next year, they're concerned if they don't fill out that form, or if they can't read that form, or if they don't speak the language, that that form isn't going to get filled out the way it needs to be to secure that free or reduced lunch.
Ms. Solomon and Mr. Legrand, do y'all feel like y'all have addressed that with the school systems regarding filling out forms?
Absolutely. We had this presentation, that's why I just wanted, for the viewing audience, I would just like some of that information repeated so that there's not any confusion, that we do have a process in place. Go ahead, yes.
Thank you. Yes, we do have a process in place. It is basically a return to an issue that districts face nationwide, that they have faced nationwide except for these last two years. So it's an all-hands-on-deck type of operation where we have every way possible that we can get the word out about the forms. They can be done online, they can be done in paper, they can be printed off online, they can be obtained at the school, at our office. We do have a Spanish-language interpreter at our office, and we post them in Spanish online simply because that is the most common, but we have the ability to obtain many, many other language translations if that's a need. USDA provides that, and we can connect families with that. It's not difficult at all. So the main thing is a way to consistently get the word out, and it just really requires a team effort from our department, social media, the district website, principals, teachers, everything all along, and it is sent home, I think, more commonly at the elementary level and very consistently discussed then. And as the children age up, they tend to have a lower rate of filling out those forms, but that is absolutely vital. We are going to need to have those in order for someone to apply for free or reduced meals.
Yeah, and I'd also like to add that we have tried to get out ahead of this. Stephanie presented to our principals in March about USDA waivers are going to go away and not be, it's going to be back to basically 2018, 19, where families had to fill out these forms. It's an ongoing challenge each and every year. It hadn't been the last two years, and that's why we were lobbying so hard for, hey, we'd love to be able to keep this free across the board. Unfortunately, the USDA did not extend that waiver. So we're getting out ahead of that, presenting to our principals, making sure that they have a game plan at their building as well, because it's going to be an ongoing thing with the language barrier that was just brought up, with all the different factors that go into that that make it difficult to get 100% of those free and reduced kids. But we will ensure that each one of them gets fed. They will not, we will not be turning away kids, but we do want to make sure that if they do, if they qualify for free or reduced lunch, that they're able to put in their paperwork, and we were able to provide that for them, and it doesn't become an expense on the school district.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to make sure we had a great presentation, and I did not want anybody to be confused that we were out in front of that. So thank you, guys, very much.
Just clarity while y'all up there. So I mean, I was a little concerned with your presentation last week, so I think, is that what I hear you saying, that there are still some concerns in, you know, we just want to make sure every effort possible is given so that forms are completed? But while I have you here, if those forms are not completed within that timeframe, are we reaching out? Like, what's the behind-the-scenes that's happening on that part?
We sure do. We have, it'll look a little bit different this year than it has in past years, but we have a number of ways where we pull some information directly from the state government as far as the directly certified information, and we begin doing that July 15th. Then, we have a number of schools who will send out phone tree messages or emails, which is very, very helpful. And then we have a computer system that can pull out the information of families who applied before but have not put in an application yet, and we can reach out to those. We do make some phone calls in our office directly. That's on a smaller scale, but we can, we just have been doing those efforts, particularly if it's someone who has applied and been approved for several years in a row, and we would ordinarily be expecting it. Secondly, we have a 30-day grace period from the end of the school year into the new school year, which usually falls around the second week of October, 30 school days, first or second week of October. And families who have been approved the previous year, they can continue to basically eat on that approval through the first 30 days while we try to get in contact with them to apply if they haven't.
Thank you, and I sent you an email so we can meet.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I would like to add that the majority of that outreach for the individual students is handled by the school specifically. However, Stephanie and her team support the school with what types of things need to be communicated, what's been successful in the past, those types of things. But it's an ongoing thing, and it's something that we're going to continue to try to improve and make sure that we're outreaching and reaching as many of those kids as possible.
Yeah, just so I'm clear, I think that we are doing what we can to make sure those applications are filled out. That doesn't mean that there will be some kids or some families that may drop in those loopholes. I just think that it's good that we acknowledge to the public their options and what they can do. So, you know, once I meet with you, I'll ask those questions, so we won't keep everybody here. Thank you.
Thank you. And maybe we can have another presentation again before school gets started, or as it does get started. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Sam Treadaway?
Excuse me, allergies. To piggyback on the previous comment, my experience, the teachers were the critical, especially K-8. A little different in high school, but those teachers stay after those kids and those parents, and they pin them to them before they go home, or whatever they have to do to get that application in. Tonight, I'd like to ironically talk to you about when guest speakers are able to talk with you and present to you, because last May, for the first time in my, that I know of, the guest speakers were after the consent and action agenda, if I'm not mistaken. And I'm glad you moved it forward this month, and I would encourage you to do that from now on, as we've done historically, because if you think about a policy that might be presented on the first Monday, that would be the first reading, then you get a second reading, then you hear comments, you essentially have possibly approved a policy before the public could comment on it. And looking at a policy that you're going to be talking about in a few minutes, 2410, which is, I'm talking about the process for a new policy that lines up the process for a new policy, so it's a chicken and egg, but it says during, the draft says, "During discussion of a policy proposal, the views of the public, parents, students, and staff will be considered." I think we can all agree with that, but that can only happen if the public can comment on it and bring something to your attention before the vote. So, I would encourage you to move that back to where it normally was, like you have tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome. And Mr. Troy, just so you know, that is probably the one and only time that we have done that.
Right.
And it was really done for a reason, of some stuff that was on the agenda.
Well, I saw it was on this agenda, and that was why I thought...
Yeah, so, there's usually a rhyme or reason of why it's done, but just so you also know, and you probably do already, the policy committee is the one that sets the agenda for what policies come before us, so those are usually vetted before we get those on the first reading.
No, I'm talking about just the chance, if you have a first reading during the work session, and then you have a vote before the comments, the public hasn't had a chance to, you know, tell you what they think about a policy before you possibly approve it.
Well, not actually, because what happens is you have to sign up to speak, and when you speak, you tell us what you're going to speak about. So, if we have, that's how we kind of gear the agenda, is what's on there, what you're speaking to, okay? So, now that you say that you were on public comment prior to that being done, that's how we kind of gear how the board agenda is set.
Okay. I just know the agenda that went out, it would have been after the vote.
Right, right, right. But we've already had those discussed prior to, so you've already, you're right.
But there's been no public comment.
Right.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
But that's not the case, because as soon as the policy committee goes over these, it goes out to the public for public comment.
That's what I was talking about. I think Dr. Kapiki's probably going to explain it. Some people are, I think they're not real familiar with the process that we do.
Yeah, let him explain it, because we do get public comment. So, if, are you going to explain that?
Ms. Burns?
Okay. Explain it, right.
I know this gets confusing, but we want the viewing audience to understand how we actually do things, so it's not confusing, and I think you'll have a better explanation.
Okay, thanks. So, a policy will go to the policy committee, which has members from several different stakeholder groups in the district. Then, it will come to the board for first read. Well, first read, the first week is the work session, then the next week is the business session, but it's not approved at that point. Then, we wait a whole month, and then it goes to second read. In second read, work session, and then the next week, the business session. So, actually, a policy will come to the board four times before it is approved on a second read.
That was a great explanation.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
I think what he was saying is that because we've readjusted our schedule last month, that missed, that sequence was interrupted, and then we were going to, the agenda that initially went out had that sequence interrupted again, but we fixed that, so they did have a public comment.
But there's actually more than one opportunity to speak to a policy that the board is addressing. Right, okay. So, our third speaker for the night is Melanie Freeman.
Good evening. Ms. Freeman, if you could key up the mic, please.
Does that mean press that button?
Push that button, exactly. Thank you.
Okay, you can hear me now? Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, and Dr. Kapiki. Tonight, I'd like to address the Title IX issue of the funding of school lunches. Our president has issued an ultimatum to the schools. Either we knuckle under and put girls and boys sharing bathrooms and sports, or the children will have their free lunches pulled from them. This is what happens when the borrower becomes slave to the lender. Schools were always intended to be under the control of the local community. They run more efficiently and meet the students' needs better. A solution is to look for alternative funding. One suggestion I would put forth is finding sponsors for the school lunches. We have businesses that sponsor sports and scholarships. Why not try finding local, and I stress "local," businesses to invest in the school lunches? They may even partner in the supply chain, which could be a win-win for all the lunches. Another possible alternative would come from churches. Many have helped school supplies and backpacks being donated to the schools in their neighborhood, and these don't come with strings attached. It's time to look at doing business differently. History has shown, especially during hard times like the Great Depression, World Wars, 9/11, and many more, that Americans will rise to the challenge and meet the needs of their neighbors. In many cases, this help has surpassed the government's help, which we all know always comes with strings attached. So, let's bring the community and the students on board and include them in the solution process. These are the schools, and these are their schools. This also creates a sense of worth, achievement, and ownership. This is a great way to start a positivity program by modeling it. Involve students in the kindness, the sharing, the compassion, the empathy, et cetera, by involving them in helping their own schools. They might compete to find sponsors or do fundraising activities, and they might find that it is more blessed to give than to receive, and the rewards might just be endless. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, board members, we are going to move on to the approval of the consent agenda, which is 9.01. May I have a motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented? So moved. I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell. Do I have a second by Mr. Walter? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Fur. That motion passes unanimously. Now, we will move on to our action items, which are under 10.01, and we will begin with the architectural contract approval of Northwest Cabarrus High School, and we will have Mr. Tim Louder and Mr. Brian Cohn to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, board members, Madam Chair, Dr. Kapiki. It's my pleasure to not come before you to present the architectural contract for the design services for Northwest Cabarrus High School. We have been in negotiations with Morrisburg Architecture, and have come to agreement today. We would like to present a contract to you for a total of $4,680,000, which is divided into two phases, one being the design service phases and the other being construction phases. We have been in discussions with Cabarrus County and talked to them about the division of this contract into the two phases, and they also agreed it's more fiscally responsible to have Phase 1 for design services, and the construction services would not have to be funded until it was time for construction, because you don't want to tap your money for two years encumbered, you're not going to use it for two years, and maybe even three, depending on when the funding for the project comes about. So, with that, we would like to ask that you consider approval of Phase 1 for the amount of $3,276,000 for Phase 1 design services for this contract.
Okay, I will open it up for discussion, and I will begin with Ms. Sandage.
I don't have any questions. I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Walter?
What is the difference between the West Cabarrus project and this project? As far as architectural fees, same services, same everything?
It would be same services, the structures, and some of the services we're going to have at the school will be different. We have talked about having maybe an alternative bus garage for a satellite, as well as having a veterinary sciences project, which is...
And that's included in the fee, or that's not included?
Yes, it would be included in the square footage of this contract.
I don't know, I mean, when I look at it, it seems like a whole lot of money for architectural fees. You would think that as the project cost goes up, the percentage goes down overall, and that's not what really has happened here. So, that is concerning, but there was something else you told me about, this is a fixed fee, there's not, they're not going to come back and ask for additional fees like we've done in the past?
Yes, sir, this fee is based on a percentage of the fixed fee budget that we have present at this time, which is $90 million. Obviously, you know, that could change over time, and probably will, given today's construction market, but the fee is fixed based on this price for the lump sum.
So, the project goes up, the fees are...
If the project goes to $120 million, the fee's the same.
Thank you.
Ms. Blackwell?
So, how much is the total increase?
Total increase?
From, from the previous job?
Correct.
The, can we bring up the second document, Curtis? So, West Cabarrus High School was a $55 million RFQ-presented project, had an original contract amount with LS3P for $2,915,000 that represented 5.3% of that amount. The Northwest Cabarrus High School project was presented as a $90 million project in the RFQ, with a fee structure, as Tim just said, of $4,680,000, which is a 5.2% fee. So, the difference in the two, in rough numbers, is $1.7 million, thereabouts.
Thank you. Ms. Carpenter?
Originally, you had $4.6 million for it, right?
No, ma'am, that is a contract of $4.6 million, Phase 1 and Phase 2. Phase 1, that is inclusive of both phases, Phase 1 and Phase 2. Phase 1 is $3,276,000, and Phase 2 will be $1,404,000 will be awarded.
But you had it at 90 million. Didn't you say that the cost of it's around 120 million now?
That was our budget cost going in when we put out the RFQ. We budgeted based on the budget we have at that time. Of course, that budget can change.
Yeah, but, I mean, now about 100...
It is, so the time the RFQ was presented and written up, that was the basis of what the cost per square foot was running for a high school, as we were told. We have since learned, in the last month and a half, schools have been in Charlotte, Mecklenburg School system that are higher than that, so that's why we're anticipating the construction cost to be higher.
And are these figures here based on roughly 120 million? What are the, what is this going to be based on?
A $90 million construction budget.
Oh, is that on 90 million?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, and this is, well, this says it is 460, divided into two, so it is the 460.
That would be the total contract amount, but all we're asking for is the approval of Phase 1, which is the $3,276,000.
Oh, okay, okay, all right. Thank you.
Ms. Adcock? I don't have any questions. Mr. Fur, any comments or questions?
Yeah, so you said it was like 1.7 million, but the percentage is lower? Is that what you said, Tim?
Yes, sir.
For Brian?
Yes, sir. The original precision was...
It was like 5.3 to 5.2?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I got.
So, I guess I want to just ask, thank you, Tim. So, when is Phase 2? When will that?
So, in agreement with Cabarrus County, Phase 2 would be funded at the time that the balance of construction with the GMP for the overall project would be funded. Because that has not happened yet, it was in agreements with them, and they felt like that was a good plan, that we would fund the additional architectural services needed at that time.
Okay, all right. So, may I have a motion that the architectural contract approval for Northwest Cabarrus High School in the amount presented be approved? So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sandage, a second by Ms. Adcock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I'm a no. Mr. Fur, what were you, I'm sorry?
I was a yea.
You're a yes, okay, so, I'm sorry?
I voted, yeah, I voted against, I think, the approval of the contract, but we approved the, approved the architecture firm, so yes.
Okay, thank you. Sarah, do you have that? Yes, okay, great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, we will move to Tim's, I'm sorry, Brian. Oh, I'm, yes, you do, just go right on.
Go ahead.
You go right on.
So, next item on the agenda is for the approval of the A133-2019 Standard Form of Agreement between Owner and Construction Manager as constructor for the Arbrown-McAllister Elementary School project. This item was presented last week at the work session, and I did not receive any questions throughout the week. We have to try and answer any you may have right now.
I apologize for that not being attached to your last week's agenda. I think I'll do that to you this first thing Tuesday morning, so if you had time to review that.
Okay, so, board members, any comments or questions? I won't even bother to ask if you're good. Everybody good? Okay. Mr. Fur, any comments or questions?
No.
Thank you. So, may I have a motion that the A133-2019 Standard Form of Agreement between Owner and Construction Manager as the constructor be approved as presented? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, may I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Ms. Adcock. Now, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Fur, were you a aye?
I was a aye.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes unanimously.
Can I just ask, make a comment? So, I just want to go on record, and I remember when we had the conversation about the builders for Northwest and, I mean, not Northwest, I'm missing.
Arbrown. Arbrown-McAllister.
Is this the same company?
It is not.
That said that they stay under budget all the time?
Most all of them say that.
Well, no, this one, this one explicitly said they stay under budget, way under budget.
They do, they did tout the fact that their conceptual cost studies, most of the time, come in under budget of what they have presented to us. That is correct.
Okay, I'm going to just be watching that, that's all.
Thank you. We're way too bad.
Thank you. Now, we have 10.03, the A133-2019 Guarantee Maximum Price Amendment. Any comments or questions from board members?
I did not receive any. Be happy to try and answer them right now, if you have them.
Anything additional?
Clarification?
Board members? Mr. Fur, anything from you, comments or questions?
No.
Thank you. May I have a motion that the A133-2019 Guarantee Maximum Price Amendment be approved as presented?
So moved. Second.
I don't know, I don't know. I have a motion by Ms. Adcock, a second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Was that a aye, Mr. Fur?
Yeah.
Thank you. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Okay, we will move to 10.04, the Social and Emotional Learning Resources, and I think we have Ms. Amy Jewell here with us tonight.
Good evening, board members. So, this item is the same presentation that we saw last week and talked through with the Positivity Project, and so we are requesting approval to adopt our five-year plan for our social and emotional learning.
Okay, board members, any comments or questions? Ms. Carpenter?
I got some real heartburn. I mean, part of me, it's not paid, 200, $300,000 of it, we've got to come up with. I've got heartburn because we're required to do this, and we need to do it, but we all know we need social workers desperately, and you know that, and we all know that, and with what we're needing right now, we all need more help. We need social workers, we need counselors, we need them so desperately. We know that $300,000 is not going to help us, but everything we can do is... know that $300,000 is not going to help us, but everything we can do is great. And, you know, we keep doing these unfunded mandates and keep doing it and keep doing it because we're required to do it, and, and we're shoved in a corner. Now, I do like, the only part I do like about this is with this, we, and again, now you tell me, no, Ms. Carpenter, this is not right. With this, we are going to be able to show the parents, the question aired, the questions, and it's going to be a 15-minute lesson. That's all. They're gonna, and the teachers are going to be able just to do the lesson, and that's it. I mean, that's all we're going to have, correct?
That is correct. So it's 15 minutes a week, and it is open, shut. Everything is going to be handed right to the teachers. There's going to be training and support. There will be everything available to the parents and supplemental resources should the parents want to access them. And so I agree with everything you said, and it is hard to digest sometimes those unfunded mandates, but this one specifically, it really truly brings a lot of support and services district-wide to students. So we're not paying for personnel or paying for sustainable social emotional support for our students across the board, which will also help our teachers support them better in the classroom.
The only other question I have, and I won't, but, I mean, because this is, this is giving me some heartburn. The only thing we may can get out of this, are we going to get some good data that we can support, that we may can get some data that would give us some good numbers, that maybe could get us numbers that would give us support so we can bring on more social workers, more guidance counselors? I mean, because part of this, is it not for suicide prevention? Because this is one of the big things that I really have, you know, is really tearing me to pieces. This is where we have a real need, and we have got to do something. We've got to get people on staff for, and we've got to do something about. And so will this help us with this? I mean, that's the only thing that maybe could help me support this.
Yeah, and that's an excellent question. So 100%, and I was part of a very healthy conversation today about how are we going to track the data. The screener is the suicide prevention screener that we talked about last time. That is going to help us understand, is this working? Where are our needs? Where are our gaps? Where do we pour our resources into? And so to be able to have that for five years, we can compare year to year, and potentially even look at that compared with our other mental health data that we're going to be able to start collecting this upcoming school year, I am very much hoping that it will help us advocate for more resources, such as more school social workers, counselors, and psychologists in the school.
Okay, I'm gonna hold you to that, because I want to take that data so we can go to our people in Raleigh, to our county commissioners, to say, this is what we need. Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Fur, any comments or questions?
The only comment I have is that, I know, I know it's expensive, but I don't think there's a, a price tag to put on the wellbeing, the mental health wellbeing of our kids. So I'm all for it.
Okay, thank you. So may I?
I just had a, if I may. So I have no question about the price. I would pay a million dollars if I could for social and emotional learning. Our kids need it, our teachers need it, our community needs it. But I was going to say to Board Member Carpenter that that is a good first step or discussion with the COS SBA, because they do offer advocacy for school boards. And, you know, this is something that we can discuss, these unfunded mandates, and have those conversations to help, you know, our staff not have to worry about having to provide a service that's not funded and trying to figure out where we get those resources. So just a suggestion.
Okay, board members, may I have a motion, a motion that the Social and Emotional Learning Resources be approved as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Ms. Sandage. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we will move to 10.05, Approval of the Policy 2410, Policy Development. Was there any comments or questions, Mr. Walter?
Yeah, these two policies, 1005 and 1006. 1005, I again do like the improvements that we made to it in red that you can see, but I do not like, I'm all about making things easier to understand and easier to see. This policy is clearly called Policy Development. Policy Development is different than suspension of existing policies. We already have a policy that says suspension of existing policies, and we should keep it that way. We don't need to hide suspension of existing policies into this policy development. I think it's confusing. I think it's, there's no reason to do that. I'd like to remove that part and keep the suspension of existing policies as well. Thanks.
Ms. Burns, I'll let you speak to that.
Sure. The whole idea of the changes to policy development was to bring several policies together so there was one place that parents or the community could go to, to read about the different policy development and adoption and suspension. So that is why that was recommended from the School Board Association. The suspension of board policies, policy is literally one sentence. So to put that at the end of a policy development policy would, made sense that people wouldn't have to go look for that. And, and they might not even know that there was anything that, you know, that we would suspend policy. So now it's, it's included in this, in this policy. But, you know, these are, these are all optional and recommended changes, so it's up to the board as to whether you would keep the changes that the policy committee has recommended, or if you would, you know, if you're going to make a motion to do something differently.
Okay. Ms. Carpenter, I know you're on the policy committee, and Ms. Adcock, I think, who?
The policy committee had no problem with these changes.
Okay. Who else is the other board member?
That would be me.
Ms. Sandage, your opinion?
I'm okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with going ahead and approving the policy. I mean, I understand where Rob is coming from, but, I mean, nobody had any issue, so.
Okay. Well, this was the recommendation of the policy committee to the boards, so no one else has anything. Mr. Fur, any comments or questions from you?
No comments.
Okay. So may I have a motion that Policy 2410, Policy Development be approved as presented?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Adcock, a second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So Mr. Fur is a aye, and Mr. Walter was a no, Sarah. Great, thank you, Tim. Okay. On to 10.06, Approval of Policy 2450, Suspension of Board Policies. Same thing. I'm hearing that the board, the policy committee recommended, no changes. So may I have a motion that the Policy 2450, Suspension of Board Policies, be approved as presented?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Adcock, a second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Fur is a aye, and Mr. Walter is a no.
Thank you.
We will move to 10.07, Approval of the School Nutrition Bids. We'll have Mrs. Stephanie Almond back to the podium.
Good evening again.
Good evening again.
So I know we had a couple of comments or questions. Was there anything else? I know there were some in the emails. I think Ms. Sandage had one, but...
I'm just gonna, not gonna hold us for my questions. I'll ask questions, and if anybody has questions that they'd like for me to ask, feel free to email them to me, and I'll ask you as well.
Great. Any other board members have comments or questions?
Are we doing these bids separately like we did before? Because, again, I just can't do that milk. I'm sorry, I can't do that milk bid. I just can't do it. I can do the other ones, but I can't do the milk bid. You never did hear from any of the milk people.
No, ma'am. Unfortunately, there's just not a lot out there to choose from, whether it's from the pandemic or just the market. I'm really not sure. I'd be guessing, but we've done our best to try to...
I have a hangup. I'm sorry. I just, I know, I know, but just getting one of those bids like that.
It is very frustrating. I agree.
I just, I know, but I just...
So do you have, is it just the milk bid?
Yeah, just the milk bid. If you'll do the other ones the other way, I'm, I'm fine. I just do my no vote, and y'all just go your merry way.
That's fine.
But I just, but the other ones, I'm okay with.
Okay, but it's not in my motion, so I'm going to have to break them down. So will you just unkey, please?
Okay.
Thank you. Did anybody else have anything else? There was a lot of override there.
There wasn't really any options, right? You said rebidding would cost us more in the long run anyway, so.
Right now, that's correct.
We don't really have any other options.
In normal times, it's a great option to rebid. Right now, it's not.
Maybe moving forward, as the agricultural programs continue, maybe we should consider getting some dairy cows. Maybe we could provide the milk for all of our schools.
I would be all for it.
There you go. Solution.
Okay. All right. So if you will, let's bring up attachment number one, which is the chemicals. Can you guys click on that back there so it can be actually read? Okay. May I have a motion that the bid be presented to ALCO in the amount of $56,708.60?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, and a second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, now can you bring up the second attachment? Yes, for sure. All right. May I have a motion that the bid be presented to Paul Campbell Distributors in the amount of $861,654.85?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Ms. Adcock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Thank you. All right, let's bring up produce. Okay. May I have a motion that the bid be presented, or awarded to, I'm sorry, Lot 4 Product Produce in the amount towards, in the amount of $422,438.45?
So moved. Second.
Stephanie, did I read that correctly?
No, ma'am.
Let's, let's reword that. That's, it's R&amp;H, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna reword that. That the, the award be presented to, in the bid amount of $422,438.45 to R&amp;H Produce. No, where is it at?
Three.
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry, guys. I should have let you do this. Okay, in the amount of $386,078.75.
So moved.
Okay, so Stephanie, I have a quick question. So it's your two bid, since I wasn't here last week, I probably should have asked this before I read the motion. So R&amp;H is the winner.
Correct.
Wards was the, the second bid.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Lot 4 is the description of it, correct?
Yes. Lot 4 is, it's just a way to separate the different categories.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was real clear on what they were reading. Everybody was evidently clear but me, so. Okay, so the amount is now correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yes, that the, the bid is being awarded to R&amp;H Produce in the amount of $386,078.75. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Adcock, second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, now we're going to bring up food. So Gordon is your winner?
Yes.
Yeah. So, and I'm assuming we need to do all three of these. Lot 1, Lot 3, and Lot 4. Correct, Stephanie?
Yes. Well, we just did Lot 4. What this document is, since we're renewing with Gordon Food Service, this is the original document where we opened the bid last year, so showing the process that we use to award them. And I have the new bottom lines on the agenda cover sheet.
Okay, so that's not coming up on mine. So I'll tell you what, can you just read it that way?
Yes, ma'am. I'll be glad to. So for food, our bottom line is $3,861,034. And supplies, which is $686,000, excuse me, $686,724.88, for a total food and supplies of $4,546,726.22.
I do not have those on mine.
On the cover sheet.
Yeah. That is not what's coming up on our screen.
Can we push this off to the next one?
Well, if we can correct it tonight, I'm okay with that. But I just, what we have before us is, and that's why I wanted to make sure, because what I read to you is not what you're reading to us.
Oh, that's strange.
Can you see this? Can you click on that one more time, guys?
Mr. White?
Yes. Yes, please.
What you may want to do is accept a motion to approve the food and supplies as presented.
Okay. All right.
Point of clarification, please. So is this from last year?
Yes, that's correct. Since it's a renewal, we're renewing our contract with this company, keeping the fixed fee the same. The prices for each individual product change, but the condition for renewal is to keep that fixed fee the same. So that's the original document where last year we opened bids and made a decision to award to Gordon.
So is it appropriate to say that it's gone up over $2 million in the last year?
Yes, it went up a total of $809,960, the food and supplies together.
Did y'all discuss this last week? So I just want to make sure the board members are real clear on the number that they're approving tonight, because it's not on the screen as what was presented. But I can read that, and that's fine, and as long as they're all very clear what they're voting on, then I'm okay, because I wasn't.
Sure. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right. So if I, if I put a motion on the floor that we award the food and supplies in the amount of $4,546,726.22, is that correct, Stephanie?
That's correct.
Okay. To, and I'm sorry, he just clicked off. Who was the award winner?
Gordon Food Service, the renewal.
To Gordon, Gordon Foods. Is the board okay with that verbiage? Okay. So may I have a, a motion and a second?
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Adcock.
I'll second.
A second by Ms. Blackwell, that the award is, that the bid is awarded to Gordon Food for food and supplies in the amount of $4,546,726.22. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Mr. Walter is a no. Okay. And I think we're going to keep you for 10.08, school meal prices.
Okay, I have received some questions, and I've answered the ones that I've received, and I'll be glad to answer any other questions that you have.
Can you tell us what you've received questions regarding?
Oh, yes. There were some questions about participation, how many students this would affect, and I actually pulled that information. So going back to 1920, which we're constantly having to go back to, because that's the only time period that we have, the most recent time period that we have that has any data that could possibly be relied upon for the current state. So we looked at this, and the total breakfast, excuse me, average daily participation, so the average number of breakfasts that we serve per day in that time period was just over 7,000, and just over 1,600 were to paid students. So reduced and free students received those meals at no charge, and the paid students were the ones that, were the only ones that were required to pay. And then the lunches, the average daily participation in lunches during that time period was 14,979, with 5,686 of those being served to paid students. So of course, what we, we don't have data on this year, who is paid, who is free, because it was voluntary for them to fill out those forms, so it's nothing we can really rely upon. But that was the question that was asked last week, what, how many students would this affect? And then I think the other question was asked, a confirmation of how many, how much it would affect each student per year? if they were in a paid status. And it could be anything from, I'm going from memory now, from 45 cents if it was a student that just ate a breakfast and a lunch per week, which is pretty common for paid students, an elementary student. And then about $2, and I think it was 45 cents per week, for secondary students who would eat that same meal. And it amounted to about $14 per year. Wish I can pull that up. That's on my PowerPoint that I have.
Okay. I'm gonna ask our technology guys. Can you open up that document, please?
Yes. There we go. Thank you.
Can you go to Slide 6?
I was trying to, is it not going? Oh. Yes. There we go. 225, not 245, as I just said. Would range per week the amount of increase that they would see. So if those students were to, let's see, were to eat that way over all 36 weeks of the school year, that was the amount that was 14. That was the question that I got by email. So that ended up being, I'm sorry. I'm trying to do this by hand, because I don't have those emails with me. Well, I do have them. Sure. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I said, so while you're doing that, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the discussion for board members. Ms. Sandich?
Yeah. I'm just really concerned about how all of this transitions. And like I said, I'm willing to sit down. I don't think that we should give everybody free meals. And, you know, we pay for it. But I do think that we gotta think outside of the box on, you know, how do we do this? Because I, I just see this being, um, very impactful and maybe not in a good way to folks who are already experiencing trauma from the last two years. And I'm, I'm just not okay with that. So I'll, I'll likely be a no.
Mr. Walter?
Um, yeah. And my concern is we just approved some bid prices that, that up our costs almost a million dollars.
Yes. I'm concerned about that as well.
We're gonna have a crisis, no matter if we're trying to have a,
Yes.
adds 15, was it 55 cents and 15 cents for a small portion of the people that actually are paying now. We're not gonna get any more from the government. Our organs could get the same, right? That doesn't change.
I don't anticipate getting any more. I mean, they could certainly do 11th hour announcement like they are prone to do. But I don't really foresee any additional funding coming in as far as a per meal reimbursement, unless they surprise us by either the state or the federal government.
Yes. I, I even with this, I don't, I see, there's no way to balance a budget when you have that type of a, a cost increase, and you're not increasing your revenues any. And your fund, what is your fund balance now? It's not that, it's not that much, is it?
You are, you are absolutely correct. Because what this would do is a piece of the puzzle. So it would obviously be combined with proper labor allocation, making sure we're not overstaffing in labor, which is difficult to do nowadays, right now, anyway. Utilizing our USDA donated foods, or called commodities frequently, 100% not leaving any money on the table for that to their maximum capacity. Still scouring the bid for items that are still high quality, but maybe a less expensive version of the version that we originally wanted.
We have standards we have to meet, so we really can't skimp a whole lot on, on different versions of things.
No, and everything, that is correct. And everything that is on the bid meets those standards. So we can make a few different selections in order to do that, which is pretty much what we do all the time. We've especially been doing that this year. But you are correct, that it has actually been out of control. I've already got four, no, excuse me, six notices where manufacturers are having to increase prices for the bid that hasn't even started yet, the 22, 23 bid, because they are asking for the exception that is part of the bid, that if they have increases beyond what they can afford, that they can pass them along.
I'm gonna interrupt for just one second, Rob, because I want to make sure I'm clear in what you're saying. So I know with the bid proposals for the school nutrition, I mean, we don't have a choice. They went to the lowest. We have to feed kids.
We're paying, yeah, we're paying almost a million dollars more than we paid last year.
Right.
So even if we increase the food cost for the 4,600 or the 1,600 folks that are paying now, assuming they still pay, and I drop back, because it is a big burden, especially families that have more than one kid. That is not gonna make up that difference, not even close.
No, not, not, none of the things that I just suggested are going to make 100% of the difference. The only thing that will help is each individual puzzle piece being able to contribute some towards that. And you're correct. We don't always, we aren't always able to balance the budget because of things just like that that are outside of our control. That's correct.
There are some things, I guess, that are in the board's control that could help. But I, I'm just really worried on what we're gonna, what we're gonna end up, up with in the coming year.
I understand that.
I mean, I understand a need for an increase. I don't really like it.
Well, Rob, when you say that something's within the board's control to help, what do you suggest?
Uh, we charge the child nutrition for electricity and stuff like that. We don't need to be doing that. That type of thing. There's, there's a lot of overhead costs that, that they're paying for that they probably don't need to. We can help out with that before going into a fund balance.
So Stephanie, where, I mean, I guess I'm, since I wasn't here last week, I want to kind of know. So if, if we were not paying, when Rob's speaking to the fund balance, if we haven't been doing, we haven't awarded any bids for food in the last couple of years, because it was a free and reduced, or everything was paid for. So what, I guess that would be a question. Where do we stand on our fund balance?
Will you say that again? The part that you said about awarding bids?
So I think the misconception, and I probably said that wrong, is that we weren't, we weren't, you know, it's, it's not that it wasn't free. We were still purchasing food.
Yes, that is correct.
So that's not like just because of what happened with the program these last couple of years, that didn't mean we were off the hook for purchasing.
That is correct. What was the difference was the federal government was reimbursing us as if every child was free, qualified for free, which is a higher reimbursement, which I think is on slide two, if I can see that. Yes. So we have a per meal reimbursement that is, thank you. It is a stepping stone, depending on what the child's eligibility is. That is correct. So it's different for each of those. So what the federal government was doing was reimbursing us as if every child qualified for free meals. So that's correct. And then we still provided the, will purchase the food, supplies, everything. That part did not change. That's correct.
Okay. Ms. Blackwell?
So I just, what I really hope is that everyone is paying attention, because this is where we're at right now as a country. And this is devastating our economy, truly. And this is devastating our families and our children. We have no, we have to feed these children. We're not gonna let them be hungry. But this is what is happening in this country right now. So I truly, truly hope that everyone is paying attention to the struggle that we're all feeling right now. Because this is a tough, tough decision. We don't want to spend any more money than what we have to. But we have to feed these children. We have to. We're not gonna not do that.
That's correct.
Yeah. So that's, that's just the statement that I want to make right now.
Yeah. And thank you for that, Laura. This, this is something we don't want to come up here and ask for as well. It's just that you saw the prices on the bids. And in order to continue to buy the same amount of food and the same, provide the same service to the kids, it's costing more money now. And that's something that's outside of Stephanie and her department's control. That's outside of anybody in this room's control. But the fact is, we're paying for the same, we're paying for more with the same or less revenue, if we, if we don't raise the prices, which will then turn into a situation where our district is trying to offset the cost, because Stephanie's out of her fund balance, and Stephanie doesn't have any money to pay to continue to feed the kids at the current price that we're charging them now. That's the situation we're in, and that's a situation that we wish we weren't in at this point. If you've been to the grocery store lately, prices are a whole lot higher. Whether you want to pay it or not, you, it costs you more at the register. And that's the same thing Stephanie and her team is, is, is experiencing at this point. And trying to find a way to navigate this in a, in a fair way without raising it in an astronomical amount, but trying to find a happy medium. We wish we didn't have to raise it at all. And that's just the, the fact. But unfortunately, there is a, a need for that. The other thing I want to point out is, if you'll go to slide 4, I think it is, so there's a formula here. There's a, a formula where we are required to, a federal formula where we are required to raise prices based on the minimum, or the, the minimum price decrease. And I'm gonna allow Stephanie to re-explain this one again, just so you can understand that if we don't go with the minimum on this, then we could lose further funding, correct?
That's correct. So the paid lunch equity, dozen years ago or so, that was established in order to make sure that local districts were not depending solely on the federal reimbursement to supplement paid meals and keep their paid meal prices so low that they really weren't actually covering their expenses and being responsible. So they have given us every year, of course, they didn't do it the last couple of years, it didn't make any sense, a calculation that we have to do. And they give us the federal paid lunch requirement, which they base on things like the Consumer Price Index and so on. And then we compare our weighted average paid lunch price. If we are lower than that federal one, we have to increase to meet that. Now, if you're 50 cents off, they won't require you to meet it more than 10 cents at a time. You can, you can do 50 cents, but 10 cents is the minimum that they would require you, and then you would carry the rest over to the next year. So you continue that carryover process year after year. So in 2019, 20, our average weighted lunch price was $2.80. $3 was the federal paid lunch requirement. So that 20 cents, we would have had to at least raise 10 cents for 1920. And then that remainder, that 10 cents, would be carried over to the following year. So if you do that every year, between 1920 and now, you would have had three 10 cent increases already if they had enacted that during the pandemic, which obviously wouldn't even make any sense. But that's where we would be right now if it was normal years.
So we would already, we would already be 30, we would be forced to go 30 cents higher over these past three years had we not been in a pandemic, is, is the bottom line on this. So what we're, or what Stephanie and her team are calculating that they're needing to hopefully break even as a department is somewhere around that 30 cents. You know, that, and actually, a little bit lower, 25 cents for our elementary group, and I think 40, 45 cents for the,
The highest one out of, excuse me. The highest one in the category is 40 cents for secondary lunch. Everything else is 20 cents, 5 cents, 25, or 5 cents.
So that's just to give you a little bit of perspective.
Stephanie, you go, can you go to slide 5, please?
Yes.
So we've already talked about it, and, and you, the board has mentioned several different ways. But these are some of the things that are just the obvious that we are, I mean, this is the reality of what we're dealing with. If you look at some of the usages, is also a good point that Mr. Walter's brought up. Depending on if you use the 45 cent increase or use the two and a quarter increase, you're somewhere between, if you raise the price of the meals to the recommendations that, that you're getting, you're gonna raise between, anywhere between 102,000 to 511,000 dollars, depending on usage. It could be, it could be less, it could be more. But you're gonna be somewhere either in between that or above. So if you had the same usage for lunch of 56, 86 paid kids, and you use those numbers, the 45 cents, two and a quarter, you're somewhere in that, in that ballpark, which offsets some of these revenue expenses. And the bottom, the bottom one is really the concerning one, where I, like, this is an incredibly difficult decision, uh, decision you're making, I understand it. But you're also gonna deficit as high as a million dollars. And a fund balance only lasts for so long. You keep tapping the fund balance, and at some point, that gets to zero, and it's not even, you know, it's, it's just, it's not, it's, I, I don't need to tell you what I know, you know. We cannot continue to hit the fund balance for all of the issues that we're facing in terms of increases in cost. So as difficult the decision as this is, and, and I don't like to recommend these type decisions, but you're anywhere from $18 a year to $90 a year per family if you use the 45 cents, two and a quarter per week prices. Again, I don't want to assume anybody's finding that situation, because that is difficult for everybody. But the reality is that the business side of this is that we, we do need to offset some of the expenses. Is there anything I'm missing there?
The one other thing to point out, Dr. Kupicki, is, and we touched a little bit about, a little bit on this last week, was not only have, are the food prices going up, there's a minimum state rate that went from 13 to 15 dollars on July 1st. So we, not only are we paying more for food, we're paying more for the people to prepare it, serve it, which I'm all for with paying them more. I believe they deserve more. But again, that's just an added expense on Stephanie's bottom line. And just trying to minimal, minimize the, the loss. I don't, I don't know if we're gonna be able to make up, like, to Rob's point, the million dollar deficit, you know, that, that potentially be there. But it could minimize that loss and, and be absorbed a little bit with, with the, the fund balance, you know, to help offset that. Because we're, again, we're not trying to raise this to make money, hopefully just to, to break even. Or maybe even not break even, but, but have it in, in, in a range where we're able to help cover it through her fund.
But do you realize there is an impact? And as you said, it was $90 per family. Most, most families have more than one child in this school system.
Definitely understand that.
Yeah. No, it, it, that's a good point. You know, it could be more if you have two or three children, for sure. Absolutely.
Yeah. I'm not saying we don't need to raise the price. I get it. What I'm saying is I am concerned about the transition. And I said that last week. I still have questions that you and I have not talked about. that you and I have not talked about. That's my concern, not us raising the price. It's the transition from free to not free anymore, which I'm sure, I know, I know, that that's not easy. So, I just want to make sure that we are considering every possible avenue to make sure that that transition is as successful as it could be. I get it, raising the price. Milk is $4 at this point, and it was a dollar and some change. Okay? So, I get that. So, I just want you to know and understand that I am not questioning the need to raise the price. And I agree to Laura's point. This is where we are as a country. We are not the only ones having this discussion, but it doesn't mean that we don't have it.
Just a question for the businesses that are out there, that are looking to help, you know, to, you know, partner with us. Maybe this is something that they could do that would be a huge help to our school system and to these children, if they wanted to donate in some way to this. Is that possible? Is that something that we can work on, or reaching out to our local community businesses?
It's not out of the question. There are some provisions where we can do that. There is, currently, we have people from the community donate, and even have, like, small fundraisers. Some businesses will, in order to pay off the paid meal charges that have not been paid at the end of the school year, because school nutrition is not allowed to carry that unpaid debt. So, that is definitely a great start. And there are also some provisions in the paid lunch equity that if you have a alternate source for the amount that you would have to raise meal prices by, then you can avoid a price increase. But finding that alternate source is always the difficult part for districts. But that is something that could be investigated.
So, let that be heard, Cabarrus County. We are looking for an alternate source. This could be a great advertisement for your business. If you wanted to make up the difference for all of these families and these kids, I can't imagine a greater gift.
How do they reach out? What do they do?
I'll tell you what. How about we do this? We can mention this at the June 27 budget meeting, which is probably even better. So, since this doesn't seem to have been really vetted tonight, real well, for everybody to have gotten answers for sure, anything else left, let's email it.
One more thing is a serious look at the food waste issue.
Say that one more time, Rob.
Food waste issue, if we can reduce the amount of food we're just throwing away, we might be able to save quite a bit.
I am 100% behind that. I investigated that after it was mentioned last week. And the one that we had done recently, I don't know the exact date, it was before my time here, it was in the last 10 years. And since we had received that mandate to serve a fruit or vegetable. And we did it by weight at just a sampling of schools to try a before and after, a, there was some sort of education component in order to help kids learn not to waste food by that. And it really didn't make a big difference. That doesn't mean that it, if we start a campaign for that, it would not. But you have a very good point in that federal guidelines require us to serve certain quantities, serve certain items such as the fruit or vegetable, and then make available all five components. Now, they don't have to take all five components, they can decline two, as long as that fruit or vegetable's on their tray. And what we can actually do, and this would be something that would definitely need to be in partnership with schools, is truly educate the students on that, because that is where we see some of the food waste, where they don't want a milk, so they take a milk anyway, and it might go in the trash. We would hate to see that. And that is an excellent way to save some money. The fruit or vegetable, there's not a lot we can do about that. But we do, of course, try very hard to stay within a reasonable pricing for that, to stay at a meal cost that we believe we can afford. So, great point.
Ms. Carpenter?
Again, when you say fruit, vegetable, don't you know which fruit and vegetables they like? Give them the ones they like. Really!
Yes. We are required, fruit, we do give them basically what they do like. Vegetables, we're required to meet subgroups, minimum standards per day, per week. And so, you have things like red, orange vegetables that are required and so on. I don't want to give all the details. But we are required to meet certain ones at specific times. So, even though there are things that they would probably prefer, we're, it would be impossible to make it work within the guidelines in order to serve it all the time.
And I'm kind of leaning towards my other guys down there. I've got a real, again, I'm kind of right here with them. When you're looking at gas going from $2 to $5 to $10, and peanut butter you can't get, and everything else. And when you've got a family that could have three to five children, and you multiply that 225 times the two to three, and you've got other things, and when they have to look, whether they're getting medication or they're getting other things, I got a real problem with it. I really, really do. And I know, and I'm a numbers person, and I want to balance things and everything, but I've got to weigh the other things. So, we do have to look for possibly alternatives. We've got to look outside that box.
Yeah.
And I know where we've got to look.
Yeah, and Ms. Carolyn, if anybody's on the borderline as far as being able, having to make those types of choices with their kids, yeah, this is not a decision we take lightly at all either. But we would, we would encourage those families to apply for free and reduced lunch. Possibly, it could be something that they could get the reduced rate, or the free rate, based on the amount of kids they have and their household income. So, there is help for, you know, parents and families that are on that, or in that type of situation, if they do qualify based on the federal guidelines.
And that's where we're hoping they would. But again, that's where I do have a concern. And then, too, I've been in this neighborhood, I mean, been, it's never been in this community a long, long time. And unfortunately, some people let their pride get in the way, and I hate that. And I do not, too, I have been in situations, too, I know what hunger can do to a child and do to the learning. And we don't want ever, ever, to let that get in the way. And again, we've got to look at every avenue and everything possible. And again, we've got to turn over every stone. And we will. And we appreciate what you and your staff and what everybody's done. And again, we don't want any child, anybody ever to go without feeding. We won't do that. Well, I'll get out there and put that peanut butter jelly sandwich together. But again, if I get peanut butter. But we won't, we won't do that. But again, I appreciate what your staff's doing, and we're gonna, we're gonna get through this.
Ms. Adcock?
I don't really have any questions. More of something that I read today, that there's a lot of states across the nation that are putting this in their budget for next school year. $100 million seems to be the magic number. And I'm just wondering if this can't be something we talk to our legislators about and put on our legislative agenda for July.
We can do that, absolutely. That's a, that's a good topic to add, it is. Mr. Fur, comments or questions?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I've got to be careful, but there's so much I would like to say. And because we're, we're not naive to know that this, where this started and where this is going. It's not, I hate to be the, I hate to spread the bad news, but it's going to get worse and worse. We're going to be going through this same situation next year. I know those people are doing everything possible. And, you know, we're sitting here questioning and asking a million questions, and they're doing everything they can to make this work. None of our kids will ever go without lunch, I know that. They've always done a good job of that. And I don't know. I think, like I said, I hate to be the person spreading the bad news. But, you know, I'm a business owner, and I see it. I see the direction it's going. And we just need to buckle up, because we're going to be facing a lot of different crunches over the next two years. So, I don't know. It's not much to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, board members, are we, is it the pleasure of the board to go ahead and act on this tonight, or move it to the June 27th to get any additional information? Yes, I'll add it to the June 27. Was that, is that better? Can you, is that okay with you guys?
Yes, that should work for us as well.
Okay. So, if I could have a motion that we table this decision tonight and move it to our June 27, 2022 budget meeting?
Same.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Ms. Carpenter. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
No.
Did you vote no, Tim?
I did. If nothing's changed, yes, I voted no.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move it to...
Absolutely.
One thing to answer, a couple of comments, very quickly, is that I'm actually so encouraged at how, not that I would think you would not take this seriously, but how much thought you as a board are putting into this, because very often, school nutrition programs kind of find themselves in a position where they are trying to get the word out. And it's very difficult. You have limited ways to get the word out to your families. And what we do see very, very often is when it comes from the board, the superintendent, the principal, everybody basically sending the same messages, our families do get those messages. And we have resources, like the language interpretation, things like that. But your concern over this topic and care for our kids is absolutely the thing that can help us make that transition and answer a lot of those questions. Is it perfect? No, it should be free for everybody forever. But while we're in this, there are some things that we can do. And so, I really appreciate, excuse me, I really appreciate that support you're giving, not to me, but to our children.
So, that's why we have these discussions, and the viewing audiences, we do want them to participate. And that's why we do ask questions when people make statements. And we want to make sure that everyone is real clear, and we want to make sure that board members are real clear on what they're making decisions on as well. So, you're right, it is very important. We know that kids have got to be fed. We know y'all are doing an astronomical job. We just all got to meet somewhere in the middle. Maybe this will give us some time to get that word out there, and maybe there will be some businesses that would like to help out. Okay, all right, thank you, guys. We are going to move to 10.09, which is our 2022-2023 Cabarrus Health Science Institute Memorandum of Agreement. Mr. Alred, have you gotten any questions or comments from board members?
I just had questions from last week about one area that looked like it was a transpose error when we moved this over between the two schools or the two systems. So, I reached out to Cabarrus College of Health Sciences. We're looking at D under liaisons, to ensure that we're accurate there. So, Cabarrus College of Health Sciences will appoint a liaison on staff for the 22-23 school year, with no funds exchanged from Cabarrus County Schools to the Cabarrus College of Health Sciences. Similar to our other two early colleges in subsequent years, 23, 24, 24, 25, 25, 26, and so on, we will move $50,000 from Cabarrus County Schools to the Cabarrus College of Health Sciences. They will hire a liaison in subsequent years, which is consistent with our budget, our application in future years. There will be no money expended next year, but it will be noted what that is. So, what I've done is, and I've talked to Ms. Hammond, is updated the language to reflect the correct years that we talked about last week, Rob, and to make sure that that was clear, that there'll be a liaison on staff, no money exchanged, and then the 23-24 school year, why the liaison, as noted in our application. And I believe everything else was the same.
Does that answer all the questions or comments that was made last week or since? Anything else, board members?
Happy to make a motion to approve this contract.
Perfect, you go.
I will second, was that the motion? I will second that motion.
So, I have a motion by Mr. Walters to approve the 2022-2023 Cabarrus Health Science Institute Memorandum of Agreement as presented with the noted corrections. Motion by Mr. Walter, second by Ms. Carpenter. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. So, Mr. Fur is saying he has lost connection and cannot get on. Have y'all gotten him back on back there? Are you able to reconnect? Mr. Fur, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Did you, did you hear the motion on the MOA?
No, I was, I lost connection.
Okay, I'm going to repeat that one. Mr. Walters made the motion to approve the 2022-2023 Cabarrus Health Sciences Institute Memorandum of Agreement as presented with the noted corrections, and Ms. Carpenter seconded it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we will move to 10.10, Board of Education Meeting Calendar. And I know that I asked board members to bring their calendar, just to make sure. Mr. Walters had notated that there is conflicts in November. It's with the meeting with the North Carolina School Board Association, and then also with the general election. We looked at it, and I'm not sure that there's a whole lot of movement that can take place in November without causing additional conflicts as you move forward, you know, closer into Thanksgiving week. So, do board members have any recommendations? Would you like to approve it moving forward with those dates?
Madam Chairman, you know, in July, we just have one meeting. We do our business. And I know that me and Mr. Walters both discuss, or he suggested, is maybe do, since it's such a busy month, just do a business and a work session together. Just do one month, because that is a very, very busy month. But just do our work and business session.
Well, that's the reason why we usually just have one in July, is because it's not a busy month. Now, if we do one that's a combo of work session and business for November with the forecast of all the things that have to be done, it might get to be very lengthy. But I think that's, you know, that may be...
I mean, I would, I mean, because like I say, we've got that, you know, our meeting then, and, you know, like I say, it's a busy month.
It is busy.
But I'm willing to, I'm willing to put forth the effort. I don't know about the other board members.
So, what date, did you guys have a recommendation as far as the date to land for one meeting?
I don't, I'm open for suggestions.
Right now, it's for the 8th and the 14th. The 14th, we're all supposed to be in Greensboro, which is hard to hold a meeting here if we're all, the majority of us are up there. So, I do think that date needs to be moved.
So, we could move it to the 21st, or you could back it up?
That is Thanksgiving week, though, so just keep that in mind.
But do y'all leave it on Wednesday, or?
And I'm also fine to meet on Tuesday, the 1st instead of the 7th.
Would you like to go to Tuesday?
Would avoid the conflict with the election.
So, the election is on that Tuesday night?
Election is on Tuesday, the 8th. If we met on Monday, or Tuesday, November 1st, as a replacement date, we wouldn't have to meet on the 7th.
What's the pleasure of the board? Is that good? So, move November to November the 1st? Combined work session, business and work session.
Is, is that okay with the staff?
That's what he, Dr. Kupicki was saying.
That's a reasonable request. I don't think it was going to be opposed to one meeting versus two.
Okay, so I hear moving the, making a combination work session and business meeting for November the 1st, Monday, November the 1st. I'm sorry, Tuesday. Right, Tuesday, November the 1st. Is that good? Mr. Fur, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay, so Tuesday, November the 1st. All right. And then the other conflict is January's meeting. You go ahead.
A January meeting is currently scheduled for Tuesday, January 3rd, which is the exact day we, everybody gets back from a two-week Christmas, New Year holiday. I just don't think that's a great time for a meeting. I think we need to push the meeting back a week. So, we would be meeting on the 9th and the 16th, instead of the 3rd and the 9th.
Okay, isn't there a holiday on that, in that month as well?
Martin Luther King Day is January 16th.
Scratch that.
So, you can go January 9th. And you can go January 17th, which is a Tuesday for the regular meeting.
We're already scheduled it for a business meeting on the 9th, so that would just be a work session.
Correct.
And then the 17th.
17th could be the actual.
Would be the actual business meeting.
So, your recommendation is to make January the 9th the work session, and January the 17th the business meeting?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Mr. Fur, are you good?
I guess, but I, we've been having meetings on January 1st week in January for like 100 years.
Right. Okay, are you okay with the work session being on January 9th and the business meeting being on January the 17th?
Yes, I guess.
Okay, thank you. All right. Are there any other conflicts noted by board members? Okay, hearing none. May I have a motion that the 2022-2023 Board of Education Meeting Calendar, which will begin on July the 11th of 2022, be approved as presented with the noted corrections?
So, moved?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Walter, a second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, and since we have pulled our School Resource Officer Program contract and moved it to our June 27th meeting, then that concludes the business of the Board of Education's Business Meeting for tonight. I would ask that we have a motion that the board convene in closed session to consult with an attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-318183, and to consider confidential personnel matters pursuant to General Statute 143-318186.
Same.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, and a second by Ms. Adcock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And with that, we will say goodnight to our viewing audience, and we will see you on July the 11th, 2022. Goodnight.